Companion animals amendment puppy farms bill twenty twenty one and matters associated with puppy farming in New South Wales. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Orang nation, the traditional custodians of the land on which we are meeting today. Of my respects to elders past, present and emerging. And celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including various animal welfare organisations, councils and government representatives. We will start with a number of individuals with a perspective to share on the puppy farming issue. While we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via tele video conference today. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. The transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in two thousand and eighteen. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take that question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within twenty one days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. As we have a number of witnesses in person and via the video conference, it may be helpful to identify who questions are directed to and who we're speaking. For those with hearing difficulties who are present in the room today, please note that this room is fitted with an induction loop, compatible with hearing aid systems that have telecoil receivers. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses to today's hearing. And could I, for each witness, so starting from my left, your right, please state your name, position, title and square either an oath or affirmation? And I'll start with you, Mrs Donnelly.
My name is Shereen Donnelly. My affirmation is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Miss Maloney?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Miss Johnson, who is coming to us via via video conference? If you could, I believe you've been sent the um.
Um, sorry, I'm actually having trouble finding it. Um, in my, oh, here we go. Oh, I'm sorry. I've got Covid, so I'm just trying to function.
You're all right? So it's just, so it's your name and your title and.
Okay, so Amy Johnson. Um, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and I'll ask each of you, each of you to make a short opening statement, generally about two minutes. Because then we open up to questions and there's a fair bit of value in the questioning from the committee members. So I'll offer you all each an opportunity to make a very brief opening statement. And at the end of questioning, I'll give each participant about a minute, minute to wrap up if you think there's something you've not said that you would like to say. Or if there's something you've said that you think may have been misinterpreted, just to sort of round out your time in front of the committee. So I'll start with Miss, Miss Donnelly, just a short, brief opening statement.
So just thank you to you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a volunteer for Hunter Animal Rescue up in Newcastle and we've been able to see the result of neglected animals from puppy farms. In two thousand and fifteen, we rescued ten dogs who came to us with dreadful conditions such as ear skin, eye infections. Some of the dogs had both her eyes missing. Um, and the psychological damage was heartbreaking. In the past week, another puppy farm has been charged with eighteen accounts of having let a dog called Strawberry die. She rotted to death with puppies still inside her after having trouble giving birth with no vet or medical attention. And it's hard to believe that they're still allowed to continue to operate with a hundred breeding dogs. Um, Hunter Animal Rescue are lucky to have pet quarters as a sponsor. They have enclosures in their stores that help us rehome a lot of our animals. Um, with the thousands of rescue organisations that are bursting at the seams, animals that need to be rehomed. It's, I can't imagine why we wouldn't need puppy farming. Um, and part of the bill is to encourage pet stores to assist these organisations in rehoming these animals that are desperate for forever homes. So I understand that there's a lot of discussion and it may need some tweaking this bill, but it's a great start. And we're very, obviously all very passionate about getting animal rights heard and animals looked after.
Thank you very much. Miss Maloney?
Ah, yes, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about dogs that I fostered that have come from puppy farms. I've been a foster carer for approximately twenty years and have seen firsthand the suffering these dogs have endured. And I look forward to telling you all about my experiences. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Miss Johnson?
Hi, I have fifteen years' experience in veterinary nurses, animal rescue and dog training. In this time, I have had extensive exposure to and experience with large commercial intensive breeding facilities of dogs and even cats, which are referred to as puppy farms, as peties. I have a range of experience, which includes constant exposure to some of the worst farms, which are blatantly cruel, but also exposure to what the industry would call best farms. I'm taking this opportunity today to share with you my experience to show how the obvious cruelty in puppy farming is common. And that even in the best facility, there is severe systematic cruelty, which demonstrates that the breeding of dogs and cats in large farms, no matter how good they try to be, are inherently very cruel and can never be made.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're opening up for questions. So the way this works, this committee could sort of leave it around. So it's a bit more conversational at times than maybe other committees that you may have sat in front of. So just relax and answer, answer as truthfully and as accurately as you can. I'm going to start the questioning with, with Mr Benassia.
Thank you, Chair. I might start with Miss Maloney if you'd provide a bit more detail about this particular puppy farm that you fostered a dog from a couple of years ago. Was, what information do you have on this puppy farm in terms of its location? Uh, was it a farm that was, that was, had a DA application successful or was it just completely rogue? What details do you have?
From what I know, there was a hundred and eighty seven dogs seized by the RSPCA from, from the puppy farm in Coffs Harbour. Um, I don't know if it was a well-known puppy farm. I, I don't know that. But the whole hundred and eighty seven dogs had to be carried out due to being petrified. They had no human contact. They were also damaged. The RSPCA couldn't rehome them, so they called on rescue to take them all on. Ten were euthanased, but the rest all went into foster homes where we had to work with the dogs.
Thank you. I just probably more a general question to all of you. Um, is it also a, this issue of puppy farms or intensive breeding? Is it a, also a resourcing issue as well in terms of RSPCA and animal welfare league? Being able to actually properly get out and check on these, these facilities? Is, is that also part of the problem that it's a lack of adequate resourcing to keep an eye on these, these larger facilities, do you think?
I would probably say yes. And there's just more and more of them.
Miss Johnson, do you have anything to?
Um, I would say yes and no. Um, so in my experience, I've had countless times that I've called the police and called the RSPCA. Um, they've done nothing, but can you blame them? Like the RSPCA is a charity. And the police, when you call them, they say, just call the RSPCA. Uh, so yes, that is true to a degree, but then we're also forgetting the psychological trauma of forcing neat dogs to live in solitary confinement and sensory deprivation. Their complex beings with rich social and emotional lives being forced to live in barren cages. It's outrageous, honestly. Like, I've seen the places that are supposedly good, where they're clean, they give them fresh food and water. They even have the exercise yard and these dogs are all demonstrating, and even cats, just the psychological torture of the conditions they're forced to endure. Like, it's, it's like a maximum security prison. And their only problem is that they produce beautiful little puppies that people can make a lot of money from.
So can I just touch on the, the ones that you say are the better facilities? Um, in your mind, do they add you to the Breeders' Code of Practice? Um, and if, and if so, is it a case that we should maybe lift the standards of the Breeders' Code of Practice to obviously raise the standard of breeding in the site?
Um, the amount of dogs that they have, there's no way that they can look after them properly. Um, even, so I've done a lot of boarding and worked in boarding facilities. And there's no way even one person or even a couple of people can look after a hundred dogs humanely. Like, it just doesn't work. And then you've got to remember their bottom line is profit. So, uh, they're going to do the bare minimum, um, to make money. Like, I just don't think, I do think here they're probably sticking to the breeding codes to a degree. Um, I'm not sure if the breeding codes mean they're in loving homes though, like get exposed to humans and socialisation. Um, yeah, so I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to, before I go to Miss Boy, can I just ask, I'll start with Miss Johnson, but also Miss Maloney, Miss Donnelly. Um, one of the issues that we are looking at is consumer protections. Do you think there's a lot of awareness amongst people about where these pups come from, the facilities or the nature of the facilities? And should there be, should there be greater protection around consumer protection? So I'll start with Miss Johnson and then I'll work on.
Uh, people are absolutely unaware. Um, when I, in my fifteen years' experience and realising, when, when people realise what they've done and they've bought someone from a puppy farm, they are just outraged. And the fact that they can't return them, like, how is that even okay? Like, every other customer protection you can return, if there's a problem. And that you just can't return them, like, and they're spending thousands of dollars. Like, it's not just like fifty bucks, it's like five thousand dollars. And then they're having to pay thousands and thousands more to try and fix these medical and psychological problems that these dogs have. Um, because the puppies, you wouldn't think so, but it's true, these puppies have psychological problems. Because they're thrown up in a cage with a mother that's highly distressed, with all the other dogs in your facility constantly crying and trying to get out of their cages because they're distressed. Like, it's a huge, it's really bad. I can't believe that they get away with the customer service.
Yep.
And the lack of protection. Uh, and, and my point is that people don't know, they honestly don't know, because they don't see the facilities. They never see the facilities.
Yeah. And Miss Donnelly?
Yes, I've found the same thing. I, whenever I catch up with a friend or family member or even if I'm just down the park and there's someone with a new puppy, I always start a chat with them. And more often than not, I say, you know, where did you get the dog from? And so it was really easy. They made it so easy for us. They brought the dog to us and, you know, everything was done online. And, and I said, that is a huge red flag for a puppy farm. You should always go out of your way to find out about the breeder, find out if they're registered. Go to their facility and, and have a look around. I said, if anybody's bringing a dog to you and making it that simple for you to get the dog, then it's clearly they don't want you to see their facility. And it's really, there's no education. People have no idea. They're always really surprised and think that they were just getting great customer service. Um, but it's a huge red flag if people are going to be, be bringing puppies to you to, to meet them and, and do everything online.
Miss Maloney?
I agree what the other two ladies have said. I think people are a little bit more aware now of puppy farms. I, like the ladies, I make sure I tell people about puppy farms. Someone at work says, oh, I've got a pup. Then I grill them. Where did you get it from? And a lot are just, oh, no idea. For instance, my hairdresser contacted me a month ago. One of the clients bought a pup, costs, I think it was about five thousand, has hip dysplasia and it's four months old. Uh, the breeder kept making excuses, oh, I can't get down to Sydney to pick it up, but I will eventually. So they asked, would Denise at Paul's, who I foster for, take it on? And Denise said, Rob and I can't afford to, to pay for the surgery. So I don't know what's happened with this pup, whether the breeder did end up taking it, taking it back. And they certainly wouldn't return the money.
Yeah, yeah. Miss Boy?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to all of you for appearing this morning. Um, Miss Donnelly, if we could talk about Strawberry and the puppy farm that she was being kept at. Um, it is one of the more horrific cases, I think, that, that I have, I've seen reported. Um, I understand that the owners of that puppy farm were sentenced last week with animal cruelty offences. So found and actually convicted of animal cruelty offences. Um, but they were only fined in, in total, between them, just over twenty thousand dollars. Do you think that part of the problem here is that there's, there's no real serious consequences for animal cruelty at puppy farms? And, um, do you think that really this sort of, you know, being found out for, for having committed an offence is just a cost of doing business?
Hmm, absolutely. Like, they were found out on this occasion, how many animals are in their backyard, dug in a hole that we don't even know about? Um, as far as I'm concerned, any animal cruelty like that, they shouldn't be allowed to be in business. It's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to leave a dog to rot to death.
Can you tell us a bit more then about what happened at that puppy farm?
I'm only basing it on discussions that I've had with people. I haven't been to that puppy farm myself. Um, but from the discussions that I've heard, these people, they're, they're just in the money-making business. They're not, they're not interested in, in welfare. And just touching on whether the, um, whether there's enough, um, you were saying. Yeah, enough enforcement and, and sort of watching over what they're doing. Like, how can you do that? I foster animals. I usually only, I have one of my own animals, one of my own cats, and I foster usually only one other due to my husband not letting me do any more than that. But recently we've been inundated and I have, at the moment I have four cats in my house. Now, I look after four cats and that's, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, feeding them, looking after them, making sure they're psychologically okay, playing with them, giving them time, making sure their toilets are clean, their water bottles are clean, they've got food. It's, it's a big job with four cats. I don't know how anybody can operate a farm like this. And, and, and they're not getting overseen. Like, someone goes and visits them every now and again. We don't know what's happening when nobody's around. They're, they're just in it for making money.
And even when we do find out what's happening, and as I say, this was a really extreme, really extreme case from the reporting. Um, I understand that these puppy farm owners are still allowed to operate.
Yep.
And that the only consequence really is that they have had a reduction from two hundred and five breeding dogs to a hundred and five breeding dogs, which is still a massive amount of dogs.
That's right. Now, get their money back on the first load of puppies that they have.
Right. Do you, do you think that people who are convicted of animal cruelty offences should be allowed to operate puppy farms?
They shouldn't be allowed to own an animal.
Um, can I just ask one more question of Miss Johnson? Um, we recently went to see a kind of a best practice puppy farm. Um, and I think the, um, your comments are really interesting around even, you know, with the absolute, if you could imagine, the very best type of puppy farm, whether that is still, um, something that we, you know, as, as a society should be permitting. Can you tell us a little bit more about why your view is that no, no puppy farm, I guess, can ever live up to welfare standards expected by the community?
Uh, for many reasons. Um, first of all is just like the other lady was saying, um, to be able to provide that level of care for these complex beings is just not feasible financially for them to run as a profitable business. So it just doesn't work that way. Like, so I've done boarding facilities, I've worked in boarding facilities and I see dogs and cats that have only been there for two months and they're suffering from psychological trauma from being confined. Uh, when I've seen these good puppy farms, um, that level of psychological trauma is like times a thousand. Um, so the cages are clean, they've got fresh food and water, they have that small exercise pen that they take them out for half an hour a day. But the level of psychological trauma that I've seen, when you're really standing there just for a moment and look at it, dogs barking at the wall, like literally, they look like they're going insane. Um, dogs that have been pacing back and forth in a concrete cage and have worn out the concrete from where they've been pacing. We know scientifically that pacing is a form of psychological stress, that most mammals do. Um, self-harm is another huge one that I've seen. I've seen dogs harming themselves so badly that the puppy farmers, their solution is to force them to wear an Elizabethan collar, which is a bucket, um, that's supposed to be for temporary use forever. So that this restrictive device, they're making them wear it. Like, I almost broke down when I saw it. And I'm working with another veterinarian, we're there to do some vaccinations. This is back, this is back when they was applying pet shops. And I'm trying to maintain a professional demeanour. Um, and the vet is just trying, is also doing the same, but the veterinarian's almost become numb to it. Um, and I've seen that, that's, I've seen those same dogs wearing those collars. And, you know, I kind of slightly mention in my professional way, because I'm getting paid and I have to maintain my job. You're not supposed to use that forever, you know, it's supposed to be temporary. And the dog, like these dogs were biting chunks of their own tails off. Like, if, if we understand that self-harm is something that happens to humans with psychological trauma and we use dogs in psychological studies, like how is, how, it's, it's pretty bloody obvious, honestly. Like, ah, sorry, I'm ranty, but, um, so in the exercise pens, you can see the pacing with dogs are pacing back and forth. You can see where they've worn out the grass. Um, so you could see the dogs, yeah, like I said, the barking at the walls, I was really surprised at. Like, it's really strange. Like, you try to get the attention of these dogs and they're staring at this wall barking. Like, they literally look like an insane person. Um, uh, some dogs that have become so withdrawn and so depressed, um, that you can't even get their attention. Like, and what I've now realised through my own research, learned helplessness. They have become depressed and we know that dogs can be depressed, we've described any, uh, any, uh, sorry, any depressants for them. So, um, the level of depression and, and the cries coming from them, this is the good facilities. Like, I've done dog training for like fifteen years and I know the difference between a cry, like a bark that is a dog wanting attention and one that is extremely distressed. And it's just, it's just heartbroken. And I know that sounds like I might be, um, putting human emotions onto these dogs, but you can hear it. And people that live with dogs know that they are emotional beings. They have highly social requirements and these facilities, no matter how clean, uh, they are, just cannot provide it. And, uh, yeah, and then a lot of these dogs, like when they're not good anymore, they just go out and shoot them. And I know they do that because they don't bring them into the clinic to give the names them. And when I tell people about this in the community, um, when I realise I'm talking to someone that's accidentally bought a puppy farmer, a puppy farm dog, they are just outraged. They're like, how can you be shooting a little poodle in the face? Like, in the head? Like, they are outraged and I'm outraged. Like, these are people's, um, family. Like, the least we can do is make sure the parents that these puppies came from are treated with the respect and dignity they deserve. Like, I'm trying to think what else I've missed.
Thank you. That was really helpful.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go to the Honorable Wes Bang and then the Honorable Emma Hurst.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for coming to appear today and provides some evidence to us on this important inquiry. I think, um, it's finding the balance between, um, illegal puppy farms and enthusiasts who are trying to embrace their, their love of animals, that we're trying to, um, balance here. And I guess in my mind, I'm thinking that it's probably something to do with education and, um, experience is the difference between those two discrete groups. In your opinion, what do you think the New South Wales Government is doing in relation to education processes for people that want to embrace, say, recreational, um, uh, dog breeding, um, for, say, dog shows and the like, versus those who are looking to, um, commercialise the, the illegal type puppy farms? Um, how do you, how do you see we can actually do the education process better for those people so that we don't have one turning into the other?
I don't think there is an education process. I think if someone has a passion and wants to breed animals, I, I fully understand that. Uh, the people who are puppy farming, they're not interested in an animal's welfare or how good an animal looks or how, whether they can take a dog to a show. They're just into making money. They just want to make money. That's all it is. It's not anything about what a dog looks like. It's about what money they can provide for them. They're totally separate to a person who has a passion for breeding.
So in that instance then, how do we educate, um, the buyers, shall we say, in, in a better way to make sure that, um, they don't confuse those who are doing, um, the breeding in a, uh, mature, compassionate way and, you know, have a real love for their animals versus those who are just seeking to make profit? How do we educate people to, to make sure that they have that animal welfare in mind when they're looking to purchase an animal?
I think it starts at the ground, the ground level with children, educating children on animal care and animal welfare and love for animals. Not everyone loves or wants to have an animal or a pet, but respect for animals is, is, starts with children. And I, I believe that any kind of education and awareness, I mean, like we said, we do it whenever we talk to people. I try to talk to a lot of people about it because I'm passionate about puppy farming and people getting animals from a good source. Um, so I talk to as many people as I can, but, um, there's not a lot, I don't think there's a lot out there that does, that does educate people.
As I mentioned, there are more people that are aware of puppy farms than probably five years ago. Again, people like us, uh, social media, yeah.
Been a big part of that.
Exactly. Yeah. Other than that, no one else seems to be doing education.
Hmm.
Yeah. The word certainly needs to get out there.
Thank you. Miss Hurst?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, in New South Wales, there's no cap on the number of dogs any breeder can have. So they could have thousands potentially if they wanted to. There's no legal requirement to have a ratio per dogs. Um, so technically they could set up with a thousand dogs, one person.
Yep.
Um, and there's no cap on the total number of litters that any dog could have. Um, so they could breed from one female.
Um, so they could breed from one female dog for her entire life. Um, is that what we need to change to outlaw puppy farming? Are they sort of the three key areas that you would like to see legislation come through Parliament? And can you sort of explain why those three aspects or any one of those aspects really needs to be focused on?
I would like to see, sorry, do you want to go first?
Yeah, we'll let, um, we'll let Robyn go first and we'll go to.
Yeah.
Um, look, I would love to see all puppy farms closed. I haven't seen one that cares about the, the dogs, it's all about the money. Uh, I'm not against registered breeders, I think that's what we need to concentrate on. If you want to buy a dog, adopt a dog, you get it from a proper breeder. Um, I have seven dogs at home, it's a full-time job. Um, I've got a couple that are foster dogs with problems. So how these people look after hundreds of dogs, I will never know, my seven.
And do you feel that a, a puppy farm is, is a large scale? So, so at the moment, puppy farming is legal because you're allowed to have hundreds of dogs. Is that, is that what you mean when you say, I'd like to see puppy farms outlawed and registered breeders allowed? Is it the cap that is, is?
Most definitely, most definitely.
And where would you see that cap sitting? I, I know, I know that's a difficult question, um, but.
You probably wouldn't like my answer.
Yeah.
Wouldn't like my answer.
Just to follow on, so some people sort of are saying three, some people are saying five, some are saying six, like, where would you?
I would say no more than ten and I think even that is too many.
Ten? She said, and even that is too many.
Even that is too many.
Yeah.
That's too many, I'm being very generous.
Well, sorry, Ms Jeff, can I just follow up on that? Just in terms of the number threshold, I mean, I've got two dogs, they're a bit of a handful.
Hmm.
Uh, if you had five and you're breeding them and you're looking after them, making sure that they're worn, fed and exercised and caring for their pups, like, surely anything beyond that's more than a hobby, isn't it? That's a sort of commercial, it's almost a commercial trafficking.
Most definitely, most definitely. Hmm, and how many litters are these people gonna allow them to have?
And even the five, I mean, five shawls is one, five Great Danes or Red Brach, it's a different animal. It's a different matter, so, should we be looking at a number or should we be looking at a sort of a ratio of space to animals, something like that?
I don't think so, I don't think how big a space you've got, you still can't provide what they need.
Provide my.
Yeah.
Gabby Johnson.
I barged into this space, so.
Sorry, sorry. Um, so in my fifteen years' experience in rescue and veterinary nursing, I've taken in a lot of puppies and kittens. And to actually look after them properly and make sure that they don't die, uh, and the mother is actually doing the job properly, because that sometimes doesn't happen, um, it is a lot of work. And I learnt very early on that I need to have a cap on how many I could take in and look after properly. And I realised that, um, I could only really do one, maybe two maximum. Um, I was having to weigh them every day, making sure they're putting on weight, that they're feeding. Uh, it, it's a, a lot of work. Um, I remember speaking to a veterinarian once and, um, I tried to take on five because the pound was saying, we're gonna kill them, like, can you take them? And he was like, I wouldn't even look after five of them here with my veterinary nursing staff. Like, there's no way, like, you shouldn't have done that, you know, it's not right. And I knew, I realised, uh, so I learnt the hard way. Um, anyway, my point is, is that I've had my own experience and it's just, it's just not feasible. Even if I had like, they'd have to have so many staff, just so many staff, and it just would, it wouldn't be a profitable business anymore. Like, they have to cut corners. So anyway, my recommendation for cats, I agree with the other lady, um, ten is, sounds like a lot to me. Um, to the general public, ten probably sounds okay. Um, I would say no more than ten, but I reckon five. And then I'm really concerned about how many they can make them have. Um, also that they're allowed to force these dogs that constantly need cesareans, um, and artificial insemination. Um, the stuck dogs, um, constantly sexually frustrated, um, uh, constantly harassing the females, sorry, I just wanted to mention this. There's another thing that I've noticed, a lot of females, because they're forced to have these babies, um, you know, stories and things that I've heard in puppy farming of ways they've tried to get the dogs to, to force them to have sex. Um, and the females that I've rescued, um, are so frightened of anyone going near, um, their back half, near their genitals or their bum and, um, terrified of male dogs, just terrified of them. And I've heard, um, puppy farmers talking to the vet saying, um, you know, this artificial, artificial insemination is costing me lots of money, um, you know, uh, is there some kind of device where I can force, uh, I can tie the female down? Um, it just, it blows my mind, like, it's just, anyway, um, ten, but I think it should be five, honestly. And I've seen, and, and it was another question I didn't get to answer, the difference between like a proper registered breeder and a puppy farm. The proper registered breeders, they'll often have the animals de-sex because they don't want people breeding their bloodlines. So that's a, a definitive factor that puppy farmers don't bother doing. Also, um, they make the effort that the dog is going to the right home.
Yep.
Um, they will actually question the people, um, they let the people come and meet the mother, um, you know, they're not shy, uh, they're, they're very, they're very willing to, uh, show how great they are.
Yep. Okay, thanks, Ms Johnson, we're just gonna, Mr Searle's got one very quick follow-up question and then we're gonna go back to this Hurst before we wrap up, so.
I apologise if I've missed this already this morning, but what do other jurisdictions do? Is there a cap elsewhere, like Victoria, Queensland, I don't know.
Yeah, the Victorians.
Yeah, I think Western Australia and Victoria.
Yeah, and South Australia's about to head into this place as well, yeah. Ms Hurst?
I've just, I, I just wanna follow up as well from a question, um, from the Honourable Mark Benaziek as well in regards to, um, you know, is this about resourcing the RSPCA? Um, and I might just throw this question, um, to Ms Johnson. Um, is it, is it also that, I mean, I mean, even if we threw millions of dollars at the RSPCA to oversee this, are they also unable to act because there aren't any laws in place? Is that the other side of the problem, that there needs to be laws before the RSPCA can actually act on a lot of these situations? Is that the feedback you're getting from the RSPCA? I think you said they often don't go or they don't do anything. Is that because they don't have the ability to, to do anything?
Absolutely, absolutely, but the amount of times that I've heard, can't do anything about it. Um, there's nothing we can do about it, completely, what they're doing is legal. Um, and that's even dogs, uh, you know, forced to wear these Elizabethan collars. Um, no law that says that you can't restrict them in that way. Um, making them wear muzzles to try and stop them barking. Um, also, we've had issues, well, I've seen, um, that we do a lot of de-barkings in these facilities because of the barking. Um, and although there's that law, there's a bit of like a loophole, um, where, you know, it's considered nuisance barking, but the nuisance barking is happening because of what they're forced to endure. Um, and we, um, are doing all these de-barkings, like, it's bad. So the laws aren't strong enough, there's too many loopholes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Also, I think issues with, um, the police piling me off and then the RSPCA is also piling me off.
I might, I might stop you there, Ms Johnson, I, I really appreciate your answer, but I just, I know that I've only got a, a minute left for, for, for another question. Um, and, and I, and I wanted to turn to the, the two ladies who are here. Um, you know, you're both fostering animals that are, that are coming from these places. Um, and it must be really frustrating, I mean, it almost sounds like it's a Band-Aid for something that, that the government hasn't acted on to actually outlaw in the, in the first place. Um, would you say that the situation is becoming worse? Um, you know, since other, other states are actually introducing laws? Is the situation in New South Wales becoming worse and is that putting more pressure on rescue organisations who are having to fund the rescue of these animals out of your own pockets? Um, so that's question one and then I'll try and squeeze another one in. I wanted to know what sort of, we've heard a lot about the psychological issues, but what health issues are you seeing with the dogs that come into your hair, into your care as well?
Hundred percent that, um, we're bursting at the seams with animals, it's worse than I've ever seen it. I've only been a foster carer for five years, but this, this last year has been the worst year for the number, number of animals. Um, I'm taking in more animals than I should and it, and it is hard. Um, that some of them, you just can't touch them, some of them just cower in the corner and you can't, it takes, you can't rehome them, um, very quickly because you have to spend a lot of time trying to psychologically get them back. I'm lucky I've got a, got a cat that's very good at that with fosters. Um, what do you find, Robyn?
Um, Denise, who I foster for, she's been asked to take on so many dogs the last few months. Uh, these are from puppy farms, um, the number is just increasing and, and all with issues.
And so what are those health issues that you're seeing?
Uh, most of it is hip dysplasia, um, bad ears, bad teeth, um, and then also just the psychological, which, which I find is even worse.
Sitting and staring at walls and cowering corners, it's just, it's heartbreaking, it's heartbreaking.
Can I, just very quickly, is there, what sort of support do you get as, as foster carers for, for, um, dogs? I gather you only do dogs, you don't, you do cats?
I do cats because I don't have yards, Robyn does dogs.
Yeah.
Is there a lot of support or not enough support?
Um, look, Denise is wonderful, um.
Do you mean from the government or do you mean?
In general.
Oh, in general.
As someone who's spent a bit of time as a foster, foster carer for kids.
Yep.
Um, often one of the issues was we didn't get support that we needed as certain dogs.
Now, can I just mention that I was a respite carer with Bernardo's for twenty-two years? And these dogs that I take in are very similar to the children that I've taken in that have been abused. I was only thinking last night, there's so much similarity there, um, with the children and the dogs. But Denise, uh, who, sorry, Denise who I foster for, she's great, uh, she, she's a big support plus other foster carers. There's a few of us that are more experienced with puppy farm dogs and others. Uh, they always seem to give them to me, I like to work with them. And I have one that was one of the hundred and eighty-seven. We weren't able to rehome Maya, uh, she was just too traumatised. And even now, she's just so traumatised. Even tweet out of a bowl, she gets scared, it's, yeah.
We rely fair, fairly heavily on donations from the public for food, um, um, worming treatments, flea treatments. Um, we get support from the local vets with reduced, um, bills for any kind of veterinary care for vaccinations, de-sexing, all that sort of thing. Um, me as a, as, um, donations coordinator for Hunter Animal Rescue, when I don't have donations to be able to provide to the carers, um, then we really basically provide it for ourselves. So I'll buy food for my animals.
Thank you, um, thank you very much for today. Um, I'm just gonna give you each about a minute or so to just wrap up in case there's something you think you would like to say that hasn't been said, or if you think maybe we've misunderstood, a little misconstrued something you have said. We'll start with, with Ms Maloney.
Uh, no, look, I just thank you for the opportunity to come in, in today. And I'm not sure if any of you have ever met a dog from a puppy farm. Um, I would love you to meet me one time and I can introduce you to Maya and you can see how traumatised she is and she's just one of hundreds.
Thank you.
I just don't feel there's any room for puppy farming breeders, I understand, I understand this bill needs some tweaking, but there, there, there is no, no, um, way to be able to produce the kind of dogs that they need to make a profit and have them not psychologically damaged, it just, it isn't work, they're not a commodity. They're a companion animal, they're companion animals.
Thank you, and Ms Johnson, just a minute to wrap up, if there's anything you wanna say that hasn't been said.
Just a short, um, statement. Um, so puppy farming is inherently cruel, they can never be humane. All puppy farms, no matter how good they try to be, force dogs and cats to endure psychological torture. This torture is caused by forcing dogs and sometimes cats, who are complex beings with rich emotional and social lives, to live in a constant state of sensory deprivation and solitary confinement. This is extremely cruel and most people in society, when they become aware of puppy farms, are outraged that this would be even legal. Um, depriving dogs and cats the freedom to explore, interact with and learn about the world around them, depriving them of being able to express their natural behaviours, to socialise and become psychologically healthy and well-adjusted, uh, causes them severe suffering. This is inherently, this is the inherent cruelty of puppy farms. Um, and why they need to be banned ASAP. Uh, it is the unsuspecting public, uh, that pay the financial and emotional burden of these industries and the dogs and cats that suffer with their lives. Thank yous.
Thank you, thank you for your time, um, with us today. Uh, there were no questions taken on notice, um, so I don't have to read the rest of the spiel out because you didn't take any questions on notice. But, um, there may be questions from the Canadian members once we get the transcript and read through it. Sometimes it prompts for the questions and in that case, the Secretary will be in touch with you about that and, um, you'll have twenty-one days to get back to us. So thank you very much, thank you for your time, thanks, Ms Johnson.
And as I said, if anyone would ever like to meet Maya, who's from a puppy farm, please contact me. I'd, I'd love you to meet her and see firsthand.
Thank you. Now, welcome our, our next, uh, our next witnesses, Ms Power and Ms Gate. Um, could I get you, I'll start on my, my left, your right, so with you, Ms Gate, if you could state your name and your position title and then swear either an oath or affirmation?
My name is Grace Gate, um, what else would you like to know?
Uh, so the capacity that you're here is a.
Oh, yes, I'm here on behalf, um, of my daughter and granddaughter, who are now living, um, on the Sunshine Coast and couldn't make an appearance, um, regarding, uh, a dog that was bought from a pet shop, um, on the North Shore, who, um, was supposed to be, uh, a ginger colour, a toy poodle, um, and, um.
So we just need to get you to take the oath or affirmation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And then, you're all right?
I haven't done this before. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank you. I might get, uh, Ms Power, if you could, your name and the oath or affirmation?
Hi, I'm Emily Power, I'm appearing in a personal capacity. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna get you a, a small opportunity, a couple of minutes to make a, an opening sta- a brief opening statement and then the committee will go into sort of questions around that. Now, it's, we do it sort of in conversation, so there's no need to be too stressed or worried about being here, it'll be, it'll be okay. I'll start with you, Ms Gate, if you wanna continue that story you were, that wonderful story you were telling as to why you were here?
Yes, yes, my granddaughter, uh, purchased a dog eleven, eleven years ago from a North Shore pet shop. She did look online, um, um, at, at the dog homes and, um, but she couldn't find what she wanted. And I, I did warn her that they were from, they would be from a puppy farm, but regardless, um, they went ahead and, and bought one. Um, she was supposed to be a ginger colour, a toy poodle and, um, she's none of those. Um, she's not, she's a, a dark cream colour, she's not a toy, she's the size of a, um, a miniature and she is totally blind. Um, she started to lose her sight at the age of five. Uh, my daughter took her to the vet and then to a specialist who examined her eyes and said it was hereditary. He said either from one parent or both, nothing can be done about it. Um, she is now totally blind. Um, she went from a, a, a jovial, happy dog to a very insecure dog that, um, often wimpers, um, finds it difficult to get around. Um, my son-in-law bought a pram so he can take her on walks because he feels guilty leaving her behind. Um, he's retired, um, and I think, I honestly, I've had dogs all my life. I had a dog at the age of thirteen, which my family bought for me from a pet shop, um, who several weeks later died of distemper. Um, I've had several dogs over the years, but I've always bought them from a breeder and I saw the parents and I had papers. The other thing I wanted to add also, that, that Billy, her name is, um, the dog that in, in reference, um, she, um, has, she was, she was, she was supposed, her birthday was supposed to have been in February according to the pet shop papers, but to, according to the council, she had a birthday in March. according to the pet shop papers, but to, according to the council, she had a birthday in March. So we don't know whether she was born in February or whether she was born in March. Um, and I, I've seen, I've seen televised raids on puppy farms and the conditions are just appalling and the amount of dogs that have to be put down and pups. And I've just heard the evidence here and it brought tears to my eyes. Um, there, there's, there, there's no reward for suffering. Um, these animals, these animals shouldn't be suffering the way that they do. These people have no conscience. They are there to make money, money, money and they just don't care how the animals suffer. Um, they need to be closed down. I don't think there should be one in existence. There are too many dogs that, that are surrendered, unwanted, too many, too available, too easily available. They're a commodity and they should be something that should be treasured because they're sentient beings. They relate to you. Uh, I think they, I think they're one of natures.
Thank you.
Good, positive creations.
Ms Power?
Um, as a person, I object to the harsh treatment of animals, sentient beings treated as a commodity. As a consumer, somebody who recently bought a puppy, um, I, I found it really hard to find information to make sure that I was making a good choice. Normally I'd adopt, um, a rescue. I was looking for a puppy for my kids. It was the pandemic. A lot of people were doing the same thing. Um, and I think that there was a flood of puppies on the market to make that demand and I was shocked by how much people were charging for the puppies. Sometimes they were being sold sight unseen because they were in regional areas. We weren't allowed to leave Sydney and so you'd start looking up who could courier me a puppy. Um, as a consumer, we normally have information on the working conditions that um are given to the people who provide our clothes, our food. Um, we have the choice to buy free range. We know when something comes from a sweatshop generally. Um, and we can make an ethical choice, but I didn't find it easy to do that in this case. Um, I think the community is appalled by animal cruelty and we need harsher penalties and legislative standards to protect animals. Um, I don't personally care as a consumer, as a, as a pet lover. I don't care about people's ability to make a profit. Um, animal welfare should come first and fines are not enough. I think that they need to be, um, if anyone's gonna be cruel to animals, gosh, how do they treat people? You know, I just, it should be treated the same, I think. And I worry about the charities who bear the burden of puppy farming. What happens to adult puppies?
Yep, okay. I would just like to, I'll start off the questioning and then I'll move to Ms Boyd. Um, can I, this, this, the protections for consumers purchasing, whether it be in pet shops uh or online via Gumtree or whatever the, the mechanism is, from what you're both saying, you would consider the current consumer protections in New South Wales inadequate?
Definitely.
So I'll start with you, Ms Gate. What, in, in which case, what would you like to see put in place to change? To be improved for people who buy?
Yes, I would like to see, um, I, I, I would like to see animals not bought online. Um, I would like to see puppy farms closed down completely, not one um to produce, um, because there were too many, they're, they're, they're a commodity, they're available, they're just, it's like, it's just as, it's, it's like walking into a shop and buying a pair of shoes or a T-shirt. Um, and, and some people get them for the wrong reasons. Some people uh buy dogs and then they find out that, like in our case, she's very loved. Um, um, they turn out not to be what, what they were supposed to be, whatever breed, whatever size and, or, and, and they hand it, they hand it in and then, and then animal charities have a surplus of them and then some of them can't find homes. It, it's, it, it should only, they should only be done by breeders where people that are serious about wanting a dog, wanting a member of their family, are wanting, wanting to teach their children um about, um, about caring, about responsibility, to go to a breeder and to see the conditions, to, to meet the parents, to understand the temperament of that dog.
So, so Ms Gate, are you talking about like a registered breeder? Is that what you're talking, having?
A registered, yes, a registered breeder, as, as I have done, I've bought from them. Um, I've had different breeds. Um, I have not had a dog since nineteen eighty-six. Um, she was a, a duckshunt and unfortunately, poor little thing, she died of pancreatic cancer, but I still carry her paw print on my heart. And I, I'm, I'm seventy-nine now and I have health issues, so I can barely look after myself, let alone, you know, be responsible and having to.
And Ms Power, so what, what do you think needs to be put in place then to protect consumers? What, what would be some of the things that you would like this committee to look at?
Well, it would be nice if a, as a consumer, you didn't have to worry about the welfare of your puppy. You just have to worry about, you know, the temperament and there's already so much to think about. Um, it would be nice to know that the dogs came from a loving environment and that the puppies would also be well-socialised and healthy. Um, I, I guess it would be um good to have legislated standards for raising um puppies and animals. Um, and even um maybe like a audits, uh, audits of uh farms, maybe vet inspections, although I know that vets are already so busy as it is. Um, and possibly like a grading system on how good the, the places or the kennels are where they're bred.
Yep, okay, thank you. Abigail?
Thank you. Um, just um one question about, I guess we, we keep hearing the, the alternative to better regulation of puppy farms would be um perhaps some form of consumer education. Sort of hear this as a, a line of resistance to better regulation. Um, why is it that we can't really rely on consumers to do the research? Um, could you maybe talk a little bit about why that's just unrealistic?
I think people are trusting. I think um, I, I think people, people are basically trusting and they just assume that they're going to purchase a healthy dog um that hasn't been forced uh bred. Um, they don't know where it's coming from. Um, in, in, in pet shops, they look cute, they're in the window, they, all the puppies and kittens play together and, and people are taken in by that. And not only that, but they pay exorbitant prices. Our Billy was fifteen hundred dollars. Um, it was a gift for my, my granddaughter's eighteenth birthday. Um, and I mean, people and it, it, it's just, they, people should know, people don't want to do the research because they don't feel that they have to do any research. Um, and, and a lot of people are just, are just innocently gullible.
Ms Power, I think you were going to say something?
Um, yeah, I was just going to comment. Um, I wrote in my submission, um, but I can repeat it, um, just for, in case no one's read it. Um, that when I was looking, I, I did a bit of research. I thought that the way to find out if a puppy was um sort of, I guess, uh, I don't know what you'd call it in legally bred, not legally bred, but you know, um, ethically or that the breeder was doing the right thing, that their dogs would be registered. And so I wouldn't buy a dog from, a puppy from an unregistered um dog. And so I'd look up the, I'd ask for the microchip number and it would often be invalid. And so then I'd think, oh, well, I'm not buying that puppy. Um, but apart from that, I couldn't tell what steps the breeder had to go through, whether they'd visited vets or um, whether they, you know, they're often breeding personal premises, private property. So you're not allowed to go and see where the puppies have been raised. Um, or if they're in a, a shop, obviously, you, you don't know where they've actually been born and raised. Um, so the information isn't really available to the public.
Do you think selling um puppies in pet shops prevents or perhaps legitimises um the, I guess, the process of, of intensive breeding of puppies in that, you know, if you see, if you see a, a pet in a pet shop, you assume that the pet shop has done the due diligence and so it's not necessary to then do more than that? Do you think that there's a legitimising role for pet shops?
I think it could be perceived that way, but then personally, I probably am a bit cynical and I think they're there to make a profit. And um, you know, the dogs are advertised at five thousand dollars, four and a half thousand dollars easily. Um, anything with the name oodle um is very expensive or a French bulldog. So when they're advertising them at that price, I assume they're making a bit of a commission on that. Um, I, I wouldn't, I would trust as a, as a buyer that they have personal relationships with these breeders, perhaps. I would assume that um they often get puppies from them and they might know what the premises are like. Uh, I, I don't know if they're obliged to ensure the safety of the animal or even to report whether they see something that they don't agree with.
Uh, Mike, Mr Menesia?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Um, Ms Gate, obviously you're fairly critical of buying from pet shops.
I am.
Um, part of this inquiry is to look at the proposed bill by the Royal County Hurst and one of the proposals in the bill is to only allow pet shops to sell rescue dogs. Um, given that rescue dogs come with their own set of behavioural problems and sometimes faulty genes, do you think that also is creating a potential problem there while allowing pet shops to sell those, only sell uh shelter dogs rather than be able to sell, you know, dogs from reputable breeders?
Yes, I think so. I think that, that it could be a problem because then a dog is, is purchased and it, and then it's returned and then it's got one owner and it's got another owner. So the dog in the, it, it, that has a behavioural problem um is in that, is, is, it's, it's, it's creating more problems for this poor dog. It's like a, it's like a child um that goes from home to home to home because its parents don't want it. Um, so, and in the meantime, the dog gets older and therefore people don't want an older dog. Um, I've seen, I've seen a lot of programmes televised on television. I'm retired, I have a lot of time on my hands, I get to watch a lot of television, but um I, I was listening and um to the proposals, why they should be closed down. I, I don't, no, I don't agree that they should be sold in pet, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. I, I feel that dogs and cats should not be sold in pet shops. They should only, if people are serious about buying a member of their family, purchasing a pet, they should go to a breeder, a reputable breeder, a licensed breeder and that's it. No pet shops, no, no puppy farming, they should be closed down, not, not next week, next year, but as soon as possible to, to stop the cruelty. Um, it, it, it's, I don't know if anybody here has seen uh what's been televised when the RSPCA has raided these places. It's abominable, the suffering, um, the conditions, the filth. Um, maybe they're not all like that, but they are there to make a huge profit indiscriminately. And as I said, our dog now, um, you know, some people, some owners might have had her put, put to sleep, but um my daughter chose to, she's eleven now, she'd been having, she's about, she's about three parts poodle. Um, she may live till she's sixteen or seventeen and, and as I said, she wimpers a lot and she's insecure. It, it just breaks my heart because I love her dearly. We all do.
And Ms Power?
Um, yeah, sorry, I just wanted to double check what your question was about animal welfare, animals in pet shops?
Well, it was just part of the, this inquiry is looking at a, a proposed bill around puppy farms and one of the proposals is to only allow rescue dogs to be sold uh via pet shops and not other dogs as a way of, I guess, cutting off that, that supply chain. Um, I was just saying, given that a lot of rescue dogs come with their own set of issues, do you think that's potentially creating another issue down the track that we'd, we would need to deal with?
I think it shows, I mean, the fact that animal welfare groups are using um pet stock and pet um to rehome animals just shows how they're bursting at the seams. Um, I, I think the best place for these animals is to be in homes where they're socialised um and not to be in shelters as much as possible, so.
I just want to ask one more question about the education thing. Um, I don't think anyone's suggesting that education replace, you know, group regulation, but you obviously went through some considerable steps to, Ms Power, you went through some considerable steps to make sure you're buying from a um, a reputable breeder. Do you think more can be done in that space though in terms of educating consumers, you know, even with it's like a checklist of, this is what you should ask, you know, a breeder? You know, these are some key questions you should ask. Um, do you think that would help as part of the education process?
I think it, as part of the education process, yes, I think so. Um, I believe the Animal Welfare League might have a page like that on their website, but you only find it if you're looking for it. Um, it's possible that vets could provide that sort of information or councils when you go to register your pet at least, you know, at some point. Um, it's just not widely available.
Thank, thank you Chair. Um, my first question's to Ms Power. Um, previous witnesses at this inquiry have actually said that it should actually be up to the public to investigate and find out what sort of breeder that they're buying from. Um, is that fair or, or even possible as somebody that's looking to, to get an animal?
I don't think it's possible when they're on private premises. Um, I ended up buying my dog through Gumtree or the Trading Post and I rang a few of the owners to find out, you know, how many dogs do you have? And asked a few questions and they were a bit cagey. Um, they didn't really want to give me their address until they were sure that I wanted to come and inspect the puppy. Um, when I did get the address, I'd look it up on Google and Google Earth and try and hone in and have a look, you know, was there grass in the backyard and that sort of thing? And I did see corrugated iron sheds, um, mainly around Kemp's Creek area. It seems to be a hotspot for puppy backyard breeders. Um, and then other people, it's in their private home. Um, you know, you sort of think a family breeding dogs, it must be so lovely, they're in a lovely environment, but you don't actually know because you can't go in their backyard, you go to their front door. They show you photos of the puppies on um a little blanket, you know, it looks nice and cosy, but as a consumer, you have no way of ensuring that it's a good environment.
Absolutely. And I've just got a follow-up question about, about the pet shops as well. Um, you know, one concern that we heard a lot about was that a pet shop can act as a smokescreen um to sort of hide even further. Um, you know, at least you're, I mean, it sounds absurd to require somebody to actually have to go on to Google Earth to try to find out if, if the facility's a puppy farm, but obviously if it's a pet shop, you, you can't even do that. Um, do you think that there's a concern that if, you know, if pet shops are allowed to continue to sell dogs from puppy farms, that it will just act as a smokescreen and create more consumer confusion?
Um, yeah, I am concerned, yeah. Um, I think even puppy farms, I've, um, like you, I've looked at um some big boarding kennel sort of breeding places that Banksia Park, I think was one in Victoria or something and they just had all these oodles, oodles of puppies and um they didn't provide their address on their own website. And I don't even know if it's a legitimate business. I could be paying five thousand, ten thousand dollars into somebody's account and I don't even know if I'm gonna get a puppy at the end of it. Uh, so it's um very hard to find the truth.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you also mentioned the microchip numbers, um, and a whole lot of fake microchip numbers. Um, do you think again, it's just this whole system as, as it currently is working is just failing?
I do think it's failing. There's too many gaps. Um, animals are, it's just, they're falling through the cracks, the cracks, exactly. And um I just find that it's too easy for people to have a litter. I mean, my husband said, gosh, maybe we should, maybe we should breed a dog, our dog, because he was sold under sex. The, the guy actually expected him to not be de-sexed. And I said, no, we're going to de-sex our, our dog. Um, and my, my husband said, gosh, if we found a female Jack Russell, we could make twenty thousand dollars from one litter. Um, and my, my husband said, gosh, if we found a female Jack Russell, we could make twenty thousand dollars from one litter. It's just too easy. There's no inspections, there's, there's no audits. I mean, I, I heard about the RSPCA recently, um, fining a father and daughter duo who had a hundred dogs and they seized a lot of dogs and they got a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. That's, five, a five thousand dollars a puppy, that's thirty puppies that will pay off that fine for them.
Hmm. Do you think that if, if we introduce legislation, for example, that limit, limited the number of litters that any dog could have? That limited the number, total number of dogs that somebody could have? That that would create some peace of mind to the public when they're looking for animals? That, that these facilities that have hundreds of dogs and pump out litter after litter can't legally exist? Or if they do exist, that at least the authorities could potentially track them down and shut them down? Do you think that that would provide some comfort to the public?
No, I don't because there's an old saying, rules are meant to be broken. And, um, if these people are unconscionable to begin with, they'll just continue doing so. Um, I was at Chasford not long ago and there was a, there were two, um, French Bulldogs uh, uh, on a lead young man and I asked and it happened to be mother and daughter. And I found that, that he is just, he's not a breeder, but he's breeding dogs, um, at seven thousand dollars apiece. So people are doing that and you can't, you can't really keep track of that. But, um, you, you can, you can keep track of, um, these, uh, these physical, um, breeding, uh, areas, um, that often get raided. Um, but not often enough. Um, and I do, and I reiterate, um, they should be closed down completely, they should not exist.
But do you think, so I think you may have misunderstood my question.
I'm sorry.
Um, so, sorry, so what I was suggesting was, so I just want to clarify my question. Um, so I, I think what I was asking was, one thing we've been talking about in this inquiry was small breeders versus puppy farms. And I guess what we're trying to work out is if puppy farms are legal in New South Wales, what legislation do we need to put forward to make it illegal? Um, and so I guess my question was, you know, do we cap the total number of dogs that any one person can have? Um, or how else do we actually make puppy farming illegal? How do we make sure that if the authorities raided a place, that they could actually shut it down?
Yes, if they don't, laws should be introduced, there should be a certain amount, as you said, um, being bred. And if that is overdone, overstated, um, that if they don't comply by the rules, then they should be closed down, definitely.
Um, I, I'm not, I don't condone puppy farming and churning out puppies. Um, but if it's going to happen and people want puppies and the people are trying to make this, make this demand, I think at least, the very least, the, the breeding dog should be traced throughout their lifetime, have limits on the number of litters they can have, have a limit on the age that they continue to breed to. And they should have some sort of retirement age and a plan at the end for them to be rehomed. It's just, it's obviously not a good environment for a dog just to be a breeding machine. I wouldn't want to be a breeding machine. Um, but just for their health standards, I mean, they've been overbred from what I understand. One family actually said to my husband, um, he asked, oh, so how many litters do you try to get a year? Or, you know, do you have? And the seller's daughter said, we try to get at least two a year. And the father sort of looked at it like, you know, don't say that. That's a lot. That's a long time to be pregnant. It's depleting for the body, um, to be pregnant again at back to back. It's, it's just ridiculous.
Wes, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'll start with you, Ms. Gate. Um, I was listening very carefully to the evidence you're providing to us today. And, um, I wanted to start, uh, I guess with some backgrounds. Um, so, uh, I guess your interest in, uh, the issue of puppy farms came about because of the dog that your, uh, family purchased that had, had an issue. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And, um, is that the only, um, animal that you've purchased that has had?
No, no. My, my oldest brother, um, I'm the youngest of five. Um, my oldest brother, uh, bought me a dog from a pet shop when I was thirteen.
Okay.
And he was a wire-haired something or other. And I only had him a few weeks and, um, he took a fit.
Yep.
Uh, the vet was called, gave him an injection and I think it was about two or three days later, he took another fit and died.
So, so I, we're running out of time, so I'll just get some really brief answers, brief answers if that is okay. Um, so, uh, that's happened when you were thirteen, obviously, um, there's your daughter, was it? Is that correct? Your, um, your daughter purchased?
Granddaughter, yes. My, my daughter and her husband purchased, purchased, uh, the current dog in question for her eighteenth birthday.
Okay. And so, um, other than those, uh, instances, could I ask, um, what other, um, uh, what other experience you've had around the issue of puppy farms? And, um, uh, have you, have you been to a puppy farm? I noticed you said that you saw footage on TV.
Many, I've seen more than one, yes.
Um, have you, have you had the opportunity to actually, um, visit a puppy farm or, or see one in operation?
No, I, I don't think one would be allowed to do so and see the conditions.
Yeah. No, that, that's the difficulty. Well, I guess I'm just trying to find, um, uh, some people who have actually been to one so that we can get some further evidence about that. Um, on, in that instance then, um, have you had the opportunity to, um, speak to breeders? Um, you know, of those, um, facilities or, um, you know, people that have had association with them or?
No, no, none whatsoever. My, my, my daughter didn't either.
Okay, so they, they, they didn't make themselves known to you?
No, no, no.
Okay. And, um, so the, obviously when you were thirteen, that was obviously quite traumatic. And then there's obviously been that, that, that.
Well, it was for a thirty-year-old and a puppy dog, of course.
Yeah, I can only imagine. Um, so other than those instances, um, you haven't, um, you haven't been able to actually see a puppy farm, go to a puppy farm or, um, uh, actually, um, interrogate any of the people that operate them? Um, they, they haven't, they haven't made themselves known to you?
No, not at all. And I, I don't see how one could because you don't buy directly from them. They sell them to pet shops or online or whatever subterfuge they use. Um, so, um, no.
I appreciate that.
I've only, I've only seen the conditions, um, on television.
Okay. Ms. Power, um, similar questions, I guess. Um, obviously you've, uh, it was Jack Russell, was it? Yeah. Um, you weren't given the opportunity to go see the, um, the farm in any great detail, is that correct?
So when I purchased my puppy, I went to the man's house.
Yep.
He had the puppies, uh, in the backyard, quite a nice backyard. But I think the, the parents were kept in like a concrete cage outside with a tin roof.
Okay.
Um, but the puppies were kept in the garage.
Yeah.
Um, he only had one dog, one male, one female. Um, I don't know much else though. Uh, the puppy farms I have heard of have been in regional areas.
Yeah.
They're not really accessible.
No, I, I guess I'm just trying to, um, so, uh, in Ms. Gates', I guess, situation, um, I think it'd be fair to say we're unsure as to what size of that, um, operation was where that dog came out of. Um, with yours, there was only the one male, one female that was sort of being used to, to, um, correct. Um, in that instance, it probably wouldn't be, well, I mean, depending on the definition you use, I'm not sure that it actually would be a puppy farm per se. That, that's what I'm just trying to drill down on, whether it's, um, whether somebody who's recreationally breeding two dogs is a puppy farm or whether it's, um, yeah, and so I was wondering what you might have seen when you went there. Um, in both those instances then, um, given that you're, uh, uh, I guess you're providing evidence under oath, um, how, how, um, relevant is, um, the situations that both of you are providing evidence about, do you think, to the terms of reference and to the bill? Um, that's, um, currently being, um, uh, inquired about here? Do you have any thoughts about those situations?
Do you know about those situations?
Well, the situation where we're, we're inquiring on, on the, to a bill around puppy farms, given that there was only, I believe, as you said, one male, one female at the, the property. Um, and, and, and Ms. Gate, your, um, your, the evidence you've provided this inquiry is that, um, in relation to puppy farms themselves, you've, um, been able to see evidence on TV.
Just so you know, we're also looking at consumer protections in the purchasing.
That's why I'm, I'm just asking them around. I'm just, yes, that's, I'm given that, that's been the, the primary questions that have been put to the witnesses. I'm asking them to, I guess, further elucidate their experience to, to make it more relevant to what it is that we're looking at. That's what I'm asking them, Chair.
Uh, in my experience, even though it was one dog, it was a dog that was being bred for profit, as far as I could understand.
Hmm.
Um, I, it would, I don't know how many litters that dog would have. I'm still concerned for one dog in a backyard that's being bred over and over for puppies for profit. Fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to me when I see the French Bulldogs and things that are being sold. I mean, puppies being farmed can sometimes be farmed in apartments.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I, I guess that's, um, you know, we're, we're sort of, um, i- if, if, if a breeder is, is, um, breeding dogs and, and they're providing those dogs for sale and obviously there's a market there because you, you wanted the dog for your, um, you, you and your children. And, and we know that companion animals have a, have a great, um, uh, ability to provide solace and care to, you know, young, to, to children with, um, uh, special needs, to, to the elderly. Um, there, there's, I won't say it's a market, but there's, there's a need for those companion animals, um, on, on a number of levels. So, so a- again, that, that's why I'm asking you, um, how relevant do you think your situation is to, um, what it is that we're looking at around the bill? Yeah, and that's, that's, um, why, you know, obviously that's what we're looking at is we're looking at that bill and, and the associated issues around it. I'm, I'm seeking some more around your experiences so that we can relate it back to the bill because, uh, and Ms. Ms. Gates, the same situation for you. Um, can you provide some more, um, can you provide some more?
Look, a breeder, um, produces papers with a correct date of birth. Um, uh, Billy, um, has two birthdays. Um, like I said, one from the pet shop and one from the council. Um, obviously a registered dog. Um, she, uh, when, when she was, when, when, um, when the vet asked, you know, regarding my, I remember my daughter telling me that the vet said, oh, he said, probably a, a puppy farm dog, he said, that's, we have, we, 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 we have issues with, um, some of the dogs that are bought from pet shops. Um, but, um, as I said, she was not, she was not, uh, as she was supposed to be described. She was not, she was not a toy, she was not, uh, a ginger color. And, and she was bred with either one parent or both parents with a genetic disorder. Um, it, 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 it's wrong, it's wrong. And, and these people are only there for profit. And they should not be making profit from, from sentient beings. We're not talking about a, a dress, a garment, we're not talking about a loaf of bread. We're talking about something that has feelings, feels cold, feels pain, can relate to you. Um.
Okay. Can I just ask, how did both of you, um, find out about the inquiry? And what prompted you to make, you know, uh, to, to seek to, to appear? And, um, are you members of political parties, et cetera?
No, no, I have, I, I have been signing petitions, uh, for a number of years now, um, to have them closed down.
Um, Ms. Power, I think you went to say something?
I'm not affiliated in any way with anybody or any.
Yeah. Ms. Power?
Yeah, um, I'm not a member of a political party, but I try to choose ethically. Um, I found that it was very hard in this case to, particularly in a pandemic, in lockdown. There weren't rescue dogs that I could find, rescue puppies. But I wanted to make an informed choice when I bought my dog. And I didn't, I had heard about puppy farming, I had heard about the inquiry. Um, and I thought my experience might be relevant to the committee as a consumer that, um, that I couldn't, I didn't feel that I could make an informed choice, that I couldn't find accurate information about the dog I was buying. Um, obviously with a rescue, you expect that you don't know what the origins are. Um, but when you're purchasing something for five thousand dollars or more, uh, you want to know that it's a healthy puppy, that it's, um, well socialized, that it's been raised well, that, and as an ethical purchaser, I want to know that the, the family is looked after as well, mum and dad.
But even, even with all those concerns, you still purchased the puppy?
I did. I really wanted a puppy.
This is, yeah, and that's the, you know, and that's the, um, I guess that's the reality of it, you know, in a.
At the same time, when I met the puppy, he was six weeks and five days. And I was also concerned about him leaving his mother young. I think a lot of puppies are sold too young. Um, I said to the guy, let us know when the puppy's ready to be picked up. He goes, I know, you can take it today. And I thought, if he's willing to separate it from its mother today, maybe it's better off with me than with him. So, yeah. My dog had recently died and my kids and I really just wanted another puppy. A, a dog, it didn't have to be a puppy, but having young kids, I thought, I wanted a safer breed, something, you know, that wasn't traumatized in a rescue as well.
That, I understand. Yep.
Just one very quick question before we wrap up. Ms. Hurst?
Thank you. Um, I was just going to ask, um, uh, Ms. Gates, um, your, your granddaughter's dog ended up going prematurely blind and you were told, um, by vets that it was like the, the parent animal carried a faulty gene. Um, there's, there's actually, in the media, there was, um, a puppy farmer who's quite famous for saying, um, she had, she was breeding dogs and one of her dogs was blind. And she's quite famous for saying dogs don't need eyes to pump out puppies. I'm wondering what your reaction to, to a statement like that is? That, that that woman is still legally allowed to breed and she was legally allowed to breed from that blind dog?
It angers me, it angers me, uh, in a way that I can't describe politely. Um, the woman doesn't belong in society.
Thank you.
She must be some sort of psychopath, um, with no human, decent human emotions.
Yep. Okay. Well, um, you will now get a minute each thereabouts, just to wrap up, um, this session. So essentially, this is for, if there's anything you think you would like to say that hasn't been mentioned today? Or if there's anything you think where you've maybe misconstrued or the community members may have, um, just have incorrectly applied the information you provided to us? So you've got about a minute and a half, so I'll start with you, um, Ms. Gate, just a minute and a half to wrap up your session.
I, I just would like the powers that be to, to have a conscience. Um, most of us had a, a pet or a dog, be it cat or rabbit or something, uh, during our lifetimes, whether we bought it for our own benefit or for our children. Um, and, and just to, just to do the right thing by these animals that can't speak for themselves, that ha- that don't have the ability to escape situations like this, um, that are subjected to, um, to whoever is in control, whichever human is in control. Um, they can be lucky and, and the person, the, the human can be a benefactor or, or they can have someone that will abuse them and take advantage of them. And to be, to be pregnant all the time from, from a young age to, until they can no longer breed, I think is just horrible. Um, I had one child and the matron said to me, uh, leaving hospital after twelve days, she said, well, we'll see you next year, Ms. Gate. I said, no, you won't. And I know, I, I don't, I can't speak for what level of pain a, a, a breeding dog goes through, but I know what I went through and it's not, it's not pleasurable, it's painful. And to be in a state, in a pregnant state, uh, and to give birth, uh, for, for all of your life, it's just, it's just horrendous, horrendous.
Thank you, Ms. Gate. Ms. Power?
Um, I'd just like to thank the committee for looking into this issue. I think it's so important and as a normal member of the. I think it's so important, and as a normal member of the community, it's not something I could be across. Obviously, the terms of reference of this inquiry are quite detailed, and there's so much to consider, so I'm just appreciative that both sides have an opportunity to come to a better solution for the protection of animals.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, you didn't take any questions on notice, but once the committee receives the transcript from hand side, we may have further questions for you arising from that, and so, in that case, you would, committee secretary will be in touch, and you'll have twenty-one days to answer. So thank you very much for being with us today.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. Hearing, and welcome, Ms. Purcell and Ms. Hamadi, to our next session. And I do note that we did have Gwyneth O'Jus, but, oh, she's, she's an apology due to a family funeral, or to a funeral, sorry. So can I get, I'll start with Ms. Purcell, if you could state your name, your position, title, and then take the oath of affirmation.
Georgie Purcell, President of Oscar's Law, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Ms. Hamadi?
Charlotte Hamadi, Legal Counsel, Animals Australia. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Now, I'll start with Ms. Purcell, but if you, just a brief, two-minute opening statement, is the way we'll do this, and then I'll go to Ms. Hamadi for a couple-minute opening statement, and at the end of the session, I'll give you a minute or so to wrap it up, so if there's something that you haven't said that you would like to say, or if you think you've been misquoted or misconstrued in your evidence before the committee, a chance to wrap it up. So a brief, two-minute opening statement?
Yes, I'll be brief. I'm here today representing Oscar's Law as its president. Oscar's Law was established in 2010 with a mission to abolish the factory farming of our companion animals. We focus on exposing and shutting down puppy factories, strategic awareness campaigns to encourage consumers to learn about where their animals come from, and ultimately, lobbying for legislation and regulation to stop puppy farming. Our work is in line with public sentiment, with majority of Australians opposing puppy farming and wanting to see it outlawed. Our biggest success story is from Victoria, where in 2017, we passed a puppy farm and pet shop bill. This was the first state to implement legislation to ban the sale of puppies in pet shops and to stamp out puppy farming. Since then, we have seen similar legislation pass in Western Australia, and South Australian Labor also made a commitment to do the same, and with their recent election win, we expect a bill to go before Parliament in this term. As we knock out puppy farming state by state, it is creating a crisis for New South Wales that must be immediately addressed. While a number of puppy farmers have chosen to shut down completely as a result of legislation in each state, a significant number have also made the decision to relocate to New South Wales, which has the weakest laws in the country when it comes to puppy farming. Our successes in other states have, has resulted in this state becoming the puppy farming capital, and it will only continue to worsen. While I'm grateful to be here today to speak to you, I must also note how disappointed that we are that reviews, task force, and inquiries have been set up by the government for the last ten years. We have participated in all of them. These reviews and inquiries all produce recommendations for the government, and the government has ignored almost all of them. A decade of inquiries and reviews has achieved almost nothing, and we sincerely hope this current inquiry does not continue that tradition of failure. We are in strong support of the Companion Animals Amendment Puppy Farms Bill, which this committee is inquiring into, and hope that it can be passed in New South Wales to finally give dogs and puppies the protection they deserve.
Thanks, Ms. Purcell, and I believe that appeared to be a prepared statement?
Yes.
Would you be able to hand that up to the secretary? So that we'll just put hand side in there, roll. Thank you. Ms. Hamadi?
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback on the New South Wales Companion animals amendment Puppy Farm Bill. Animals Australia is a peak animal protection organization in Australia. Animals Australia strongly supports the bill's primary aims and particulars, which are to address the serious animal welfare issues and the consumer detriment issue which arise through puppy farming and private breeding of dogs and cats, including pet shop and online sales of these vulnerable animals. We are pleased and supportive that the bill is modeled on the Victorian model in this regard, as we have held concerns about the movement of Victorian puppy farmers into New South Wales to escape the new Victorian puppy farm laws. A consistent cross-jurisdictional approach is overdue and urgently required. We support the amendments of the bill, in particular, the limits on the number of female dogs the breeders can keep, the limits on the number of litters per female, requirement for mandatory vet checks annually and before and after breeding, the minimum requirements in relation to staff members and animal ratios, pet shops only being permitted to sell dogs and cats sourced from shelters and pounds, importantly, the central registry of source numbers, wide tracking, transparency and oversight for the general public and authorized officers, the recognition of the important role of foster carers, and that the greater enforcement powers, including for council and authorized officers, achieve.
Thank you, and was that a prepared statement, Ms. Hamadi?
Yes, it was.
I'm not sure if you can, if you could email it to the secretary, that would be great, and they'll, they'll make sure it gets sent to the hand side, or make sure that your sentiments are reflected accurately. So I'm going to start questioning with Ms. Hurst, I've got a couple of questions after that, and I think Mr. Anasiak's indicated, and then Ms. Boyd, so that's, folks, that's where the list is already.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you, Chair. I wanted to start with Ms. Purcell. We've heard some pretty incredible claims during this inquiry about the puppy farm legislation. Given you were heavily involved in the Victorian legislation, and you've been monitoring the impact of that Victorian legislation, what, if any, impact has the legislation had in Victoria on smaller ethical breeders?
Chair, could I just take this opportunity to perhaps allow Ms. Purcell to declare the positions that she might hold outside of...
Hasn't that already happened prior to the inquiry?
Not, not, I just, that might be...
She's here to represent Oscar's Law, she's not here representing anything else.
Yeah.
And I've already made those declarations public.
But when you, when you addressed that she had intimate...
With her role within Oscar's Law.
Okay, so not within her other roles?
I'm not asking about anything else, I'm only asking her regards to Oscar's Law.
No, no, just, just given that you referenced it in the question, I just thought it was appropriate for people watching.
Thank you, Ms. Purcell.
No problem. So, the impact on small breeders when it comes to Victoria's puppy farm legislation, it has had no impact on them, they are still able to continue to operate. In fact, in June 2017, 260 litters from small breeders were registered, and in June 2021, 280 litters from small breeders were registered. So that's actually an increase after the puppy farm legislation in the amount of litters registered from small breeders. And I guess it's also important to mention that as some breeders might retire and move on, every single month, new prefixes are being granted, indicating that new small breeders are continuing to come into Victoria.
So it's actually helped protect some of the smaller ethical breeders, in your opinion?
Absolutely, yes.
We've heard claims that the similar legislation brought into New South Wales would decimate breeders in New South Wales and stop all ethical breeding. Why do you think that those kind of claims are being made, and were similar claims being made when the Victorian legislation was proposed?
Yeah, absolutely, similar claims were made when it came to the Victorian legislation, and our bill also ended up in an inquiry. These claims are made out of, I guess they come from fear from puppy farmers, and they take people in a scare campaign to make them think that smaller breeders and micro breeders are going to be impacted as well. This legislation is modeled very similar to Victoria's, which we have proven has not had that impact. And I guess my message to small, smaller registered breeders would be that this, this legislation actually improves what they're doing, and creates more accountability, and fixes any concerns that the puppy serve breeding might, might be coming from an unethical place, and it makes the industry as a whole a better place to operate in.
Thank you. Last week, the RSCA announced that the puppy farmer linked to Strawberry the Boxer, who died with a puppy rotting inside her, had been convicted of animal cruelty, actually found guilty of eighteen charges. However, the puppy farmers are still allowed to have 105 dogs. How would this outcome have been different under the Victorian legislation?
Yes, it would have been very different. In Victoria, anyone who's convicted of animal cruelty cannot run a domestic animal business. So if this case happened in Victoria, that puppy farmer not only would have been charged and found guilty of animal cruelty, they wouldn't have been able to continue to operate at all, let alone operate with 105 dogs. And I think it's just important to note, while we talk about Strawberry, is that that case has got a lot of attention, but it's also worthwhile noting that that same puppy farmer also prompted a parliamentary inquiry in 2015. It wasn't the first time that that puppy farmer has been exposed. And when we investigated that puppy farm in 2015, 2016, we found their dogs littered in bushland around the property, and an agreement was, came to that he could have 400 dogs then. Now we can have 105 dogs, which is 200 really, when you factor in puppies, and he's already proven that he cannot follow the, you know, the standards that are expected of him, and we are really disappointed in that result that came out last week.
Chair, can I just raise a point of order before we go to the next question? In the evidence that Ms. Purcell just gave, she said that under the Victorian legislation, the person would have been charged and found guilty. Now, they may have been charged, but I don't think we can actually...
I'm happy to correct myself, if they had been found guilty of animal cruelty, they wouldn't have been able to operate a domestic animal business.
I think there's a prejudice against...
Thank you. Are there other, are there other large-scale breeders in New South Wales that have been convicted of animal abuse? You don't have to name names, but are there, are you aware of, is it beyond Strawberry? Or are there other actual...
Yes, it goes far beyond Strawberry. Strawberry was just one case that we were able to expose to highlight the issue. There are a number of puppy farmers operating right now in New South Wales that have been charged and convicted of animal cruelty and do continue to operate. The other thing that I would like to say is, though, that's all that we know of, and we operate based on tip-offs and complaints from neighbours, and also from staff members, which is how the Strawberry case came about. Without traceability, without accountability in New South Wales, we don't know how big this problem is. We know it's a big problem, but we just don't know how big, which is a really critical part of this bill, and something we're able to achieve in Victoria, is we are able to track every single dog and puppy that is sold and bought in our state.
So at the moment in New South Wales, we can't track the dogs?
No, there's no, there's no system to track animal movements like there is in Victoria, so we just don't know how many puppies are being bred and sold in the state.
And in regards to, so obviously you would support, you know, a recommendation for a fit and proper person test or something like that, to make sure that people who are convicted of animal cruelty couldn't run these large-scale breeding groups. Do you know, we've had a bit of evidence we've heard in this inquiry as well about registered breeding organizations being exempt from, from any legislation that comes through. Are any of these convicted animal abusers part of these registered breeding organizations? Or do these breeding organizations have any oversight into what a lot of their members are doing?
Yes, so in Victoria, we had to accept an amendment that made applicable organizations be exempt from the legislation, and that's largely Dogs Victoria. We were facing a situation of having a bill passed with that amendment, or not at all. We wanted the bill to pass, but we are in support of this bill, which doesn't allow that exemption. And the reason for that being is that we operate based on tip-offs, no matter where they come from or who they're about, and a number of the, of the cruelty cases or unethical breeding cases exposed in Victoria and also around Australia have been registered breeders with a kennel club, and we think it's really important that they have the same accountability as well. And I think that while this change might be overwhelming or scary for them, it will ultimately benefit them in the long run, because it will weed out anyone who is doing the wrong thing and giving them a bad name.
The Victorian legislation's been in place for quite a while now. What's the community feedback now that it's actually in place? And are you aware of the government, the Labor government who actually put that legislation forward, has received any feedback?
Yes, so the feedback would be that, first of all, it was incredibly popular, it was a, it was a really popular change with the community, and public sentiment was well on site, and it was well overdue. People have realized that you can still get animals in Victoria, they're just not coming from puppy farms. And it's, I guess it's created more education and more awareness around where animals are coming from, and has promoted other ways to get animals, such as adoption, or importantly, if you want a puppy waiting till the right breeder comes along, I think there's this real issue going on around the country where people want puppies on demand, and it's made people really consider finding the right breed for them and waiting for an ethical breeder that meets their standards to come along.
Thank you. Has the Victorian legislation been effective at reducing the number of illegal puppy farms and dodgy backyard breeders in Victoria? Have you found, as Oscar's Law, that the complaints that you're receiving in Victoria have gone down? And then also, I guess, I don't know if you've got this with you or if you know it, but whether or not the complaints in New South Wales have changed in any way?
Yes, we, we recently ran the stats on that, and complaints in Victoria have dropped, and complaints in New South Wales have skyrocketed. Obviously, we don't know exactly why, but we would presume that this is partly due to puppy farmers relocating to New South Wales to escape Victoria's legislation. And on the point of if it's stopped or closed down unethical breeders or puppy farms in Victoria, the answer is yes, but also importantly, where it hasn't, we've been able to find out where they are and how they're operating, because we have that traceability through the Pet Exchange Register. So no animal can be sold in Victoria without being registered on that Pet Exchange Register. So if there's a high amount of animals being sold in a certain area, we can now get that data, and councils can look into whether that breeder is registered, whether they're following the laws, and whether they're doing the right thing. So even though some people might choose to not follow the law, now we actually are able to track them down in a way, and, you know, puppy farming, there was this argument with the legislation that it would force puppy farmers underground. It's done the complete opposite, it's brought them to our attention, which was exactly the purpose of the legislation.
And how has it done that? How has it actually stopped it from actually going underground?
So puppy farmers used to rely on pet shops to sell their puppies in a big way, and that legislation outlawed that, and what is done now is, most puppy farmers rely on selling animals online. Every animal that has to be sold on, that is sold online now has to have a unique ID number on the Pet Exchange Register. It's near impossible to trick that register, because you have to upload 100 points of ID, you have to prove who you are. So anyone who is selling more puppies than they should be, or, you know, it looks like something dodgy is going on, or they've got more animals than they are meant to have, we're able to track down that data now based on the amount of animals that they're selling online.
Thank you. One witness claimed that puppy farmers in Victoria are now just applying for multiple licenses of 50, and so that, one witness claims that puppy farms still exist because someone just gets several licenses for 50 and then has 300 dogs. Have you heard of that actually happening in practice, or is that even possible under the legislation?
No, we have not heard that happening in practice. Under the legislation, where you do have the ministerial exemption, where you can have 50 fertile females, again, that was another concession we had to make in order to have some legislation. If that was happening, we would know about it. People come to us with those issues, it hasn't happened, in fact, there's only been a handful of commercial breeders in Victoria that have been given that exemption, and we know about all of them, they were already operating when the legislation was coming into effect.
And, and I guess my last question is around that 50, and we were talking before about where do we cap this number, and a lot of the rescue groups were saying that 10 is too much. And, and then obviously, it's 10 in Victoria with ministerial approval for up to 50, but, you know, first of all, I guess my question is, you know, do you agree with a cap of 10? And then my other question, which is a little bit loaded, but it's around these whole guardianship models, and obviously, you know, that's been included in the legislation for the first time, but do you feel that, like, you know, some of the criticisms of the bill is that, you know, some people go so far and they say dogs will go extinct if you're only allowed 10 breeding dogs, but I guess that there could be less dogs in the market, and so, and because people would go from having 300 dogs to 10, there'd be a lot less puppies on the market. But do you think that these guardianship models would help actually alleviate some of that problem if they're done properly, so that we wouldn't have explosion in prices of puppies and things like that in New South Wales?
So to answer the first part of your question, we're in strong support of a cap on 10. We would not want to see it any more than that, that was where we were meant to land in Victoria, and we do think that it is the best model without amendment. When it comes to guardianship laws, we're really, really happy to see that included in this bill, and the reason for that being is we get so many complaints from people who do take on these guardian animals, not realizing the arrangement that they've entered into and that they are bound by that contract. It's very, very distressing for people who semi-own these animals and then have to return them to a puppy farm for breeding and for whelping, and ultimately, we would like to see that not in practice at all. When it comes to, I guess, availability of puppies, I touched on it before, but there is a lot of work to do on the education piece surrounding this, on deciding to get a puppy is a long journey, and waiting for a breeder, a good breeder will have a waiting list, they won't have puppies on demand, waiting for the right breeder, putting your name down, and it's a, you know, it's a decade-long or more commitment. If people can't wait the right amount of time in order to get that puppy, then they probably shouldn't be getting one at all. And something that Oscar's Law does is, we also encourage... And something that Oscar's Law does is we also encourage adoption as a first option. And there are plenty of animals waiting for their forever homes in pounds and shelters around New South Wales as well. And that won't change if legislation comes into effect.
So part of it is about normalising that process of, rather than having that impulse bias, but actually normalising the process of if I'm going to get a dog, I need to plan ahead.
Absolutely, yes, that's right.
Thank you. I've just got two very quick questions and then I'm going to head over to Mr Benassiak and then Miss Boyd. But so, and then Mr Fang, can I, across jurisdictional issues concerning here. So if someone's found to breach the Victorian legislation, as it currently stands, they can cross the border up into New South Wales and the convictions in Victoria essentially aren't taken into consideration? Is that correct? And maybe Mr Hamade might be the one to answer this as well. But how do we, what is the process that should be put in place to fix that, to correct that issue?
Yeah, absolutely. It is a massive problem. So anyone convicted of animal cruelty can just change state and continue to operate. We'd like to see protections in legislation stopping that from happening. And any previous convictions being reflected when they move interstate. A big issue with puppy farming is that it is a state issue and that it can't be, I guess, governed by national or federal legislation. So we really do need those national consistencies in the state based legislation in order to combat this industry and just, just to stop puppy farmers just moving around like they're currently doing.
Okay, and Mr Hamade, do you have anything to say in regard to that matter?
Nothing, nothing in addition to that, that's, that's correct. I agree with that response.
Thank you. And then can I, the next question to me is really around the online consumer protection. So as I understand it, that's actually a Commonwealth area jurisdiction. So I'm actually very keen to see how to get a better appreciation of Victorian model.
Yep.
And I believe the Western Australians have pretty much followed the same model into Western Australia. We heard earlier here from people who have had some issues around consumer protection requirements. You know, you buy a pet, we need some protections, consumer protections. How is Victorian model working with regard to online consumer protections? And if there are to be enhancements at a federal level, what would they be?
Yeah, so the online consumer protections, as I mentioned earlier, our legislation established what's known as a Pet Exchange Register. And that's where anyone, whether they are a rescue group, an individual with one breeding dog or someone with 50 breeding dogs, has to create an online profile. And every time they sell a puppy, they must not only advertise their microchip number, which was, which was already the law, but they have to advertise this unique number that comes with the animal. And that goes to show that the ad is legitimate and this person can be selling the animal. Consumers can go online and look up the number on the Pet Exchange Register to check that it is real. And if it's not real, then you can report it and the ad will be taken down. And then of course, the council gets that data and they're able to look into it. The other thing that's important about this part of the law is that it holds the online sellers accountable. So Gumtree or Trading Post or any of those online platforms can be hit with a notice to comply. And if they don't, then they can also be fined under the legislation, which is a really important part.
Okay, thank you. Mr Hamade, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I guess I would extend to that though, the limitations of even in being able to hold breeders to account in terms of parental and other defects on the puppies that they buy. I mean, litigation, court process and tribunals etcetera is quite an expensive operation. So, you know, in many cases, I guess the issue is, you know, you might get some sort of monetary refund or remedy. But I mean, by that point, you know, you're also emotionally attached to your animal. It's not a very nice process and or you may have to give the animal back. So, you know, the traceability is an incredibly important step. But we also have to be mindful that essentially these animals are still being free of property and effective goods really. And I think that's a fundamental issue that we can't ignore.
Thank you. Mr Benassiak?
I think Ms Purcell was.
I was just going to say, just to add on to that, in Victoria, we actually now have an anti puppy farm legal clinic run by the Animal Law Institute that help consumers with issues that come with buying an animal that is sick or unwell. And that's been another really important part of the legislation. I guess they help to enforce it in a way and hold puppy farmers accountable when they do sell sick or unwell animals online. And we'd really like to see a similar clinic here in New South Wales if legislation was passed.
Thank you. Mr Benassiak?
That's very good segue. In May 2021, the Animal Law Institute actually said they're overwhelmed with demand. Which was the dodgy underground breeders and puppy farms across New South Wales. And in March 2021, RSPCA Victoria also expressed concerns over what they called a resurgence of puppy farms. So can you talk us through how the legislation in Victoria has perhaps failed to deal with, I guess, this influx of people wanting to buy puppies during COVID? And what are you doing to, I guess, readjust or realign?
Yeah.
You know, because invariably demands and supplies go up and down. So what are you, what are you doing to counteract?
Yeah.
Because from a first glance, it sort of says, well, the law hasn't, you know, passed its first test in terms of the surge in, in demand.
So I, I would disagree with that. I think the law has passed the first test. I think in 2017, when we passed that legislation, nobody knew what we were going to be facing three years later across the country. And that of course resulted in a huge surge in demand for puppies. A lot of those puppies were being bought in Victoria, but many of them were coming from New South Wales to Victoria. Because while puppy farms had been, started to be stamped out in Victoria, they hadn't in New South Wales. And there's no limitations on state based trade. So a lot of the complaints that were coming through to Victoria were actually from New South Wales puppy farms. They were just being shipped over the border. I think it's also important to note that at the time we went into COVID lockdowns in Victoria, the legislation had not been rolled out in full. So there was still puppy farms operating. And the chief, the chief vet that was meant to go out and inspect the facilities in order to enforce the legislation, there was a delay on that because they couldn't enter premises due to COVID. That's all rolled out now and we're not seeing any issues in Victoria. We think that it is working in a strong and positive way.
Okay, just going on the pet exchange and the source number issue, how many people have actually been found through those fraudulent source numbers? Do you have any figures on, on that in terms of how many people it's catching? If people are putting those, you know, advertising those dodgy source numbers?
The Pet Exchange Register actually hasn't released its first lot of data yet, but we're looking forward to when they do and we'll be able to answer that question when that data comes out. From a, I guess, personal experience with Oscar's Law, we've reported a number of illegal online ads and have been able to have them removed. So the system is serving its purpose and consumers are doing the same when they see illegal online ads.
Do you know when that data is due for public release?
We don't know yet. I could follow up and find out for you.
On that, yeah, that'd be good. Just probably one final set of questions about councils. Often when we pass laws in this place that puts requirements on council, the first thing they kick back out is saying, oh, we're under resource, we can't cope. Obviously, this bill puts a lot of, I understand, or not owners, but requirements on council to do a lot of enforcement. What has been put in place in Victoria to A, make sure that the council people are qualified to make these assessments? And B, what has been the overall cost that you can see to councils and then obviously the flow on to rate payers?
Yeah, I'd have to take on notice the question about cost because I don't know the answer to that. What I would comment on though is that we haven't had any issues or complaints from councils about implementing the legislation. And as I mentioned, being the sort of leading organisation campaigning on this issue, those comments do tend to come our way. It's also important to note that local councils were already tasked with a number of roles when it comes to enforcing rules that come with companion animals such as the dams and other companion animal issues. And it's not a really big change in that aspect. In Victoria, it's just requiring things like yearly inspections and, you know, dealing with any complaints that might come their way through the Pet Exchange Register and that data by council area.
Yep. Miss Boyd, just watching the timing, it's 12.50.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Ms Purcell, for everything that you do and for appearing here today. Throughout this inquiry, one of the most, I guess, kind of confronting things I've heard is a sort of reference to puppies and a puppy market and a, you know, supply and a demand for puppies, as though puppies are like any essential good, like maybe some bread or milk. And if people can't get it cheaply and easily when they want it, that somehow that's a problem. From your experience with Victoria, is there a, you know, a dearth of supply? Have you heard, is there any evidence of people who really, you know, are desperate to have a dog in their family being unable to get one?
Absolutely not. No, there has not been that issue. And part of what I mentioned earlier is that people can still buy animals that come in from interstate, which is a problem. But also I think that we've done quite a good job in Victoria, COVID aside where the demand was through the roof, in educating people to understand where the animal comes from and the responsibilities that come with it. So people are willing to wait and, you know, till the right dog comes along, till the right breeder has a litter ready. And also more people are willing to adopt an animal, there's no shortage on that front. But there definitely is not an issue in terms of supply of puppies. As I mentioned earlier, registered breeders and small breeders have actually produced more litters since the legislation came into effect. So no, there's not going to be some sort of puppy shortage crisis. If New South Wales outlaws puppy farms, it'll just mean that the puppies that are being bred and raised in the state will be bred and raised in a more ethical way.
Do you think that every person who wants a dog should get a dog? And do you think that it should be in a kind of immediate way? Or is it good that there's perhaps a slowing of supply? There is in fact a slowing of supply.
Yeah, so something, I guess it's been a concerning trend throughout COVID has been people working from home and in lockdown deciding that they suddenly need a dog and they need a dog now. And I think that has worsened a little bit of the problem. We really encourage people to consider the commitments that come with having a pet, particularly if you get a puppy that you'll have for the entirety of their life. And that little bit of a wait to get a companion animal is an important part of the process. And it's often the case, even if you're adopting an animal, you go through that process as well. So anyone who can supply a puppy to you the day that you contact them is absolutely someone you should not be buying a puppy from. And that's something that we really, really try to make clear to people when they contact us to find out if the person they're talking to is a puppy farmer.
Thank you. And a final question, you were saying in your opening statement about, you know, we have been here for quite a while having these inquiries. And I know that if I went out on the street right now and took a sample of like 20 people and asked them, you know, showed them, for example, the situation with strawberry and those, the operators of that puppy farm said, do you think that this should be allowed to continue? I would be very confident of receiving like at least, you know, the vast majority of those people saying, no, this is not, not good. Why do you think that it has taken us so long in New South Wales to make any meaningful change in this area?
I think in New South Wales, to be completely honest, we have had a very disappointing and, well, you have had a very disappointing and a government that is too scared to act on this. And we're not quite sure why because in Victoria, we have proven it was hugely politically popular. It was a huge part of the government's reelection campaign. And it was the same in Western Australia. South Australia has just gone to an election campaign with a commitment to do the same and they have won as well. There should be no fear out of acting to do the right thing by our companion animals. Most people have an interaction with a companion animal and they love them. And, you know, no matter what side of politics you're on, people don't want to see our cats and dogs mistreated. And there should not be a fear to act in this space, particularly when most other states are following. Thank you.
Mr Fang?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ms Purcell, for coming to provide some evidence to us today. In relation to the bill that went through the Victorian Parliament, did you, you said, oh, I'm sorry, Ms Hurst, that you've had a level of involvement, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Are you able to sort of tell us how you were able to provide that involvement?
Yeah.
You know, through your organisation, but in any other ways that you might have actually been able to have something put into the debate?
Of course, yes. So I'm president of Oscar's Law, as I mentioned earlier, I have been for around five years now. Before that, I was an ordinary committee member since around 2012. We went through the 2014 election campaign with an ask for the government, whoever wins government to ban puppy farms. At the time, we had a Liberal government and Labour committed to do it if they were elected. And they were elected. So then from there, I guess, being the major stakeholder when it comes to anti puppy farming legislation, we were involved in the consultation process and working with the government to provide them feedback and advice on what should and shouldn't be in the bill, as did many other stakeholders.
Okay. And did you have a hands on role during the debate?
I had no role during the debate beyond being present as a spectator and seeing it pass the parliament.
Okay. Do you have a role in the, within the parliament in Victoria?
I think just based, I guess, to get ahead of this line of questioning, the puppy farm legislation passed in 2017. The Animal Justice Party didn't have a Member of Parliament until 2018. So we weren't involved in the passage of that legislation at all.
But now that you're, well, actually, let me take a step back. But since that election in 2018, do you have a role in the?
Yeah, as, as Ms Hurst mentioned earlier, I do. But I'm here today representing Oscar's Law. I wear a range of hats, as many people in the animal protection community do. But I've been involved with Oscar's Law for 10 years now. I've been involved with Oscar's Law longer than I've been involved with the Animal Justice Party and that I'm here today to represent them.
Do, does your party in Victoria seek to strengthen the laws with which you've spoken about today?
Do you mean does Oscar's Law?
Well, I mean.
Because we're not a party.
Can I just, just, so Ms Purcell's been sworn this morning, this morning to represent Oscar's Law. So Ms Purcell, you can answer the questions in other capacity if you wish, but I would just caution, the panelist has been sworn to represent Oscar's Law.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Chair, but very many times during the inquiries that we hold, and I'm often on the other side of this, we have people that wear a number of hats that come to our inquiries. And it's always been the practice of these inquiries that should, should a person represent one thing when they come to an inquiry, it's well within the scope of the, of the members to seek elucidations as to witnesses' other roles and how that might influence the evidence that they give.
Just to clarify, you couldn't ask the question, I'm just saying that the witness has been.
Mr Chair, let's ask for some clarification. I think the witness is here representing Oscar's Law. She's indicated, I think, that she might be a member of a political party. But she hasn't said that she has any representative capacity there or is able to speak with any authority for that party. If the honourable member was to ask questions about her party membership, you might want to clarify whether she actually has any capacity to speak for that party or any position of authority or influence within the organisation beyond being a member.
I'll leave one more.
Yeah, to, maybe to assist the honourable Westfang, maybe you could reword his question to say is the witness aware of any potential strengthenings or improvements or amendments to your legislation passed?
I asked the question.
That would be appropriate, so.
No, no, I appreciate that, but I was asking the question, I was asking the question in a very specific way because I would surmise that by providing testimony to a New South Wales inquiry, when the witness works in the Victorian legislature, if they were seeking to amend or strengthen that legislation, it might actually aid the cause that they were seeking to progress down there by providing that evidence here and then seeking to influence our legislation before it is passed. So I was just teasing that out and I know we've wasted a lot of time now, obviously, and that we're almost out of time. But it was certainly a very valid.
I didn't rule it out of order, what I said was just from mine, the animalist has been sworn for Oscar's Law. Just the, I think the question is, the question's been.
So I, yeah, so I will put that question and I'll press Ms Purcell.
So just to clarify, you want to know if in Victoria, the Animal Justice Party has intentions of strengthening our puppy farm legislation?
Yes.
I'm not authorised to speak on the Animal Justice Party here today and we do have a process in order to do that. What I can say is that we are six months out of an election in Victoria and our MP doesn't have plans to work in that space right now. But I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment further. What I did say was that our legislation in Victoria ended up not being quite as strong. What I did say was that our legislation in Victoria ended up not being quite as strong as we would like it to be. And that's why we are very, very supportive of New South Wales doing it in the way that we would have liked to have seen it done and, and not have to make the concessions that we did.
And so I guess that brings me to my final question then, is that we often hear about the Victorian legislation and how it's impacted puppy farms. It's done so with legislation that isn't as draconian, shall I say, as what is being proposed here, yet seems to have achieved an outcome. Is that a fair summation of how the Victorian legislation has operated?
I think my first comment will be that we don't consider this proposed legislation in New South Wales to be draconian. It is a model that we would have liked to have seen implemented in Victoria. And while I said the legislation has been effective, which it has been, it could have been more effective. We didn't want to see puppy farms continue to have 50 dogs. But we were facing a situation where we could have no legislation and puppy farms remain legal as they are in New South Wales. Or we could have some sort of regulation and stamping out of them, and that's the place that we reached. And as I'm sure you know, politics is often about pragmatism and we had to be pragmatic.
Well done.
Done, done. Thank you. Still got two minutes before I'm going to do the wrap-up. I've just got one quick question before we go to that wrap-up. You spoke earlier, Ms. Purcell, about the, I guess the phrase we use is the carving out of pure breeds or registered breeders in the Victorian process. In that carve-out process, did you advocate for in any way, I guess, some criteria upon which that carve-out could be accepted? So they had to adhere to the codes of practice of that organisation, for instance? Or there would be annual audits of that perspective, pure breed? Just what was the, how did the carve-out work?
Yeah, so the carve-out worked, I guess, based, it followed, I guess, the misinformation campaign that we spoke about earlier, where people were concerned about the impact on small-scale registered breeders, which we didn't agree with. But we, we agreed in the end, as I said, to get the legislation passed. So Dogs Victoria, as an applicable organisation, have made a number of commitments that they will follow in order to, I guess, ensure that the breeders are doing the right thing. That includes things like inspections or audits. But it is largely self-regulated, which we think is always a risk. And that all breeders would be better off, I guess, under the same scheme. And as I mentioned earlier, while it might be overwhelming or, you know, change is always confronting, particularly for people that have been doing this for a long time, it will, in the long run, ultimately better their industry by weeding out the people doing the wrong thing, which I mentioned earlier, a number of the breeders that have been doing the wrong thing in Victoria and other states were registered with one of those organisations.
Thank you. So this is where we wrap it up. You're going to get a minute each, just to, you know, if there's anything you think that hasn't been said that you'd like to have said, or if there's anything where you've been misconstrued or the committee may have not quite got right your testimony, you get a chance to wrap that up. Ms. Amada, is there anything that you would like to say in that one minute?
No, I just would like to thank Ms. Purcell for her comments and responses today. We wholeheartedly support and agree with all the submissions made today. And I thank the committee for looking into this issue and I implore the committee to take this on and implement it because we really do, as you've heard today, have a cross-jurisdictional issue here in terms of, I mean, the strengthening of Victorian laws and the prudent success of the Victorian laws are only going to be as good as a cross-jurisdictional approach. And we need to follow the lead also with WAMSA and fix that gap so that it strengthens all of the jurisdictions into a united approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Purcell?
I think I've covered off most things that I do want to say. The final thing would be that I really encourage the committee to not waste this opportunity. As I mentioned earlier, we have been coming to New South Wales to talk about this for a decade now. We've managed to convince most other states to act and we really don't want to end up in a situation where in 10 years' time, we're still doing this in New South Wales. We've proven with the precedence of other legislation that this doesn't stop people being able to have companion animals, nor would we ever want that to happen. We just want good welfare for dogs and puppies across Australia. And New South Wales right now is the biggest risk because there's just going to be more and more puppy farmers coming into this state. And if we don't act with urgency, it's going to really reach a crisis point. And we're calling on the committee to please come up with some recommendations that will ultimately support this bill that you're inquiring into.
Thank you. Now, I believe that there was one question taken on notice.
That was about the cost, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so you've got, the committee secretary will be in touch regarding that. And also, once the committee members get the transcript from Handsad, there's potentially more questions arising from that process. The committee secretary will also be in touch with you if that does occur. And you'll have 21 days to respond and get the response back. Thank you very much.
Is it correct, Chair, there was two?
Was it two?
They just send the date of the call.
That's right, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. And I think we have now got Ms. Ves coming forward. I welcome our next witness, Ms. Ves, from, is the CEO of the Cat Protection Society of New South Wales. Ms. Ves, if I could get you to state your name, the organisation upon which and the role upon which you're here and take the oath of affirmation.
I'm Christina Vesk, Chief Executive of the Cat Protection Society of New South Wales. And I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much. Now, if you have a short, maybe two minutes or so, brief opening statement, that would be fine.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'll cut straight to the point. Total numbers do matter. We're talking about companion animals. They need to live in homes, in family structures, not institutions. Even the best institutional care is not the same as a home. No cat or dog thrives in a shelter, pound, boarding or quarantine facility. These provide short-term shelter only. The animals need homes to thrive. More particularly, kittens and puppies need to be in home environments to grow into mentally and physically healthy adult cats and dogs. At Cat Protection, our orphaned kittens and mums and bubs are all raised in foster care for this reason. They need, especially in that sensitive period of development, to be in an environment that supports healthy development, mental, emotional and physical. It is not enough to handle them a few times a day and leave them locked in pens or cages. Dr. Liz Arnett from RSPCA made this point at the hearing on 7 April. That puppies living in an environment that approximates where they will live as adults sets them up for success. Dr. Rosemary Elliott and Dr. Catherine Van Ecker from Sentient also made this point. It is not an opinion. It is founded in veterinary behavioural science, though one might also say it's fairly obvious. I disagree that simply more staff and good protocols could provide a good environment. It can't. It never can because it isn't a home. That animals are not enjoying a good life, they are most certainly not able to live their best life. Community expectations do matter. The Australian public overwhelmingly considers pets as family members and they expect legislators to protect the health, welfare and wellbeing of cats and dogs and kittens and puppies.
Thank you very much. That appeared to be a prepared statement.
It was indeed.
Are you able to hand that up to the secretary? And that'll just make sure that your, your words are accurately reflected in the transcript as prepared by Handsad. I'm going to open up with the question before I go to the members. Ms. Ves, the, one of the things we're looking at in the, as the terms of reference to this inquiry is the impact of the government's consultation paper on licensing and regulation of cats and dog breeders. Did you have much of a role in your organisation?
Sorry, the most recent one, that was last year. We did make a submission to it, but it was very limited. I mean, the paper itself was very limited. Trying to see if I have it here. And I felt that it was a really quite wasted opportunity because it was more focused on clarifying some language, which it was said breeders didn't understand. But it didn't do anything to effectively improve the standards and guidelines.
Thank you. And the other thing I'd like to ask is around consumer protections that are required around the purchasing of kittens or cats in New South Wales. Would you be able to advise the committee your views on the current status of that? And what could, more importantly, what could be done to improve the consumer protections?
I think an issue that's been raised frequently and is essential is the whole issue around lifetime traceability and having some kind of registration system that goes beyond the microchip that actually looks at breeder licensing and that you can always understand the source of the cattle dog. Issues around consumer protection are really complicated because consumer law is about things and not animals, not living creatures. So that is difficult. It's also difficult that there are health issues that can arise a lot later that aren't necessarily anyone's fault. That's on one side. But then on the other, you have animals who, you know, particularly puppies, who've been bred in the most appalling conditions and who have health and behavioural problems from the get-go. But, you know, someone's bought them online, they can't really find that person who's sold it to them again. It's all very shady. You know, they might be picking them up in a car park somewhere. And then the person has their new pet who they've parted with thousands of dollars for and next thing you're at the vet spending thousands of dollars more. It's difficult. I think it's a kind of unique set of circumstances that isn't easily covered by standard consumer law. But I think those issues do not typically arise with people who are acquiring their pets from good registered breeders, where they go to the person's home, they meet them, you know, the mother and the family of the puppies or kittens. I think that's very different. And I think these stories that we've heard have tended to arise from online advertised puppies, where it's very difficult to trace who was responsible.
Ms. Ves, we're clearly taking a lot of evidence and all the submissions around intensive breeding of pups. But could you sort of advise the committee about how that translates to kittens? Is there, is there a similar issue with the breeding of kittens? Are there sort of underground illegal breeding facilities? Just, I guess for the committee, just so you could illuminate a bit more around how it, how it actually works, the breeding of kittens in New South Wales?
I think it's, the majority of cats are moggies. And the majority have come from pound shelters, pet shops, who are selling, often they're doing work in conjunction with a pound, so selling kittens. And most of those are coming from accidental litters or from, for our point of view, at Cat Protection, it tends to be mainly stray cats. And they, you know, mum has found someone to hang in their garage and then she has her kittens and then, you know, they work with us and we find foster care and so on. The pedigree sort of cat world is quite small, like the bird, it's quite small in terms of people acquiring those cats. And I think for the most part, it's quite good. There would be backyard breeders of certain breeds that tend to be popular. And I think as we made the point in our submission, bad practices are frequently driven by a profit motive. So, you know, you have the popular dogs and cats. And sadly, those most popular animals frequently are bred with inherent disorders that make their lives a misery. So, you know, cats and dogs who can't breathe because they're rachisphallic. You know, dogs who are so stressed that their whole life is one of suffering and they have to have, even with thousands of dollars of vet work to help with their breathing and so on, they're not having a good life. But sadly, they're very popular. So I think because people can't make, pardon me, the same level of profit from cats, that the market on the supply side isn't as, as much there.
So does that mean that there's not the, not the degree of issue in the intensive breeding of cats as there is for kittens as there is for pups? Like, there are no, would it be safe to say there are no illegal kitten breeding facilities in New South Wales?
I, I couldn't say that. There may well be, and I would say that there certainly are, backyard breeders who don't provide proper veterinary care and don't provide good standards of care, who are selling kittens. I just don't think, because it's a limited market, it's just not the same scale, I think, as it is for dogs.
My last question, it relates to, so your involvement with, I guess, the rehoming or fostering of kittens. Does that involve de-sexing before the kittens are rehomed? So that's part of the process?
Yes, we do. We do not, we place orphaned kittens and mums and kittens into foster care. And we have agreements with our foster carers and we supply all the things they need to look after them. We do training with them, we do home inspections. They're basically extended partners of Cat Protection in our welfare work. And when those kittens are old enough to be de-sexed and to leave mum, kittens mum de-sexed and they come back to the shelter for rehoming.
Does it include microchipping?
Yep, we also do registration before. So we register every cat to their new owner before they leave.
And we've heard that there's some issues around the failure of microchipping. Have you encountered that at all?
It can happen. There are, you know, kittens can lose them from, you know, even if it's been a good implantant, they can sort of disappear. Sometimes they move around the body, sometimes they are lost. It's not common, but it can happen. I would recommend to people always, every vet check, that every time you take your doggy cat, get them to scan and just make sure that the microchip is still in place and that it's readable. The other issue is sometimes that if, if people only have some old scanners, they won't read all the different types of chips that are available.
So I've got Mr. Vanasseac wanting to ask a question.
Well, just, just one, getting up on the question from Mr. Pfeig. You were sort of indicating that some of, some cat breeds would be more susceptible to, you know.
Backyard breeders.
Backyard breeding, kitten farms or whatever the word is. What are those breeds? Because I know we get a sense of what the dog breeds are from evidence. What would be the?
Probably that sort of ragdoll type, Persian type, some Bemis. But I think that because with, with a lot of pedigrees, it's quite easy to find good registered breeders. And, you know, so people, people can do that. But yeah, they tend to be the ones that it's more that very cute factor. But then there's also, there's also times that I've seen people promoting for sale a cat and suggesting it's a particular breed and it absolutely is not.
So do you, does your society get a lot of those ragdoll, Persian, Bemis as best use because of those unethical practices? Or are you more, are you seeing more of those sort of moggie, tabby sort of?
The majority.
What are called common, common chats?
Yeah, moggies. Mainly we are taking in stray cats. The, the owners surrendered or abandoned if, you know, look like a pedigree. But that's still a smaller number. But in the cases where we have had them, they've had significant health problems and usually to do with being like rachisphallic. So lots and lots of health problems there. And that's often why the people have surrendered them as well. They can't manage the time, they don't have the money to spend on the vet bills. They're completely not able to look after. So, you know. And often too, like cats like that, they can get really severe matting, which becomes a significant health issue. But in terms of a sort of pedigree cat with papers and all of that, very rare. I think we said in our submission, it's sort of, it's an occasional thing. Maybe someone's moved into care or, you know, they've passed away. Most people who have deliberately acquired a cat are really bonded with them and don't want to surrender them. So yeah, I would say that we have not had a problem at all with cats from good registered breeders.
Thank you. Ms. Hurst?
Thank you. I want to talk about a cap on the total number of animals in one breeding establishment. And I'll ask in regards to companion animals, so cats and dogs, because your submission also actually focuses on dogs as well. So you say that the capacity to care for animals is compromised with the more animals that somebody has. Can you expand on what you mean here and whether you feel that a legislative cap somewhere is needed?
Yes. The, as you have more animals, you increase a whole lot of risks. You increase risks about their mental wellbeing because are you, are you keeping them in cages? Are they not having a sort of normal life where they can express some autonomy? Are they not having a sort of normal life where they can express some autonomy over their choices or are they just cued up? Um, so you have that. You also increase enormously the potential for infectious disease and um, you know, physical health issues and also their zoonotic diseases. So if, the cost of looking after animals in an institutional setting is enormous and it's really different. I was thinking about that this morning and, you know, even my cat with his very expensive diet because, you know, he has, he has a, a particular health condition and, and this and that and really good vet care, it doesn't cost me anything close to what it costs to look after one cat at cat protection. Because it's really different. When you have a lot of animals, it's not you at home as a pet owner who's monitoring their toileting and their eating and noticing every little behavioural change that might indicate a problem. You have seven days a week, lots of animals, you have to have really qualified and well-trained staff, you need really good infection control protocols, you need time, as, as few minutes a day is not enough. And, and I'm talking in a shelter environment, like we're talking about established adult animals or kittens who've already been socialised. Um, when you're talking about the sort of young ones, going back to my point before, they have to be in foster care to be mentally well. Um, so yes, you're, uh, the minute you put your numbers up, you increase risks a lot, you increase the cost because of managing those risks costs money. Um, so I just, I, and, and I just, I don't know what that magic number is and I've sort of been reading through submissions and the transcripts and, and seeing that there are sort of discussions around guardian homes and this and that. And, and I think that, you know, it must be possible to devise um some models and show what good practice looks like. It demonstrates that, you know, find a really good registered breeder of, of dogs and, and film them and they can tell people what they do. That means that the dogs they have are well looked after for their whole life, that the puppies they're rehoming have a good life. I think that when people just look at the standards and guidelines written down, it can seem overwhelming and, and I think that was a, a failure and another missed opportunity a few years ago. I think it was 2017 when DPI brought out some um new draft standards and guidelines. And there was so much um opposition from so many in, in the sector, but I think they were missing the point because they were looking at this as this overwhelming compliance task, whereas if you just filmed someone in their home or, you know, what, however they had set up their place to be breeding cats or dogs and, and just demonstrating what that looks like in practice, it's not overwhelming.
And what about caps on litters? Um, are you supportive of these? Um, and if so, why? Um, and I also wanted to try to get from you possibly some of the welfare risks, particularly of cats who are having repeat births or C-sections.
I would defer to veterinary expertise on that and not with vets. Um, I, I did read some pretty sound arguments for maybe allowing a dog to have more than two litters because if they're, um, you know, if, if they um love being, you know, a mum dog and, and there will be some dogs, you know, who, who do like that if they're in a nice environment and so on. Um, because there is that issue of the, the genetic issues and um. But if talking about an animal who has to be regularly seized, I can't imagine um how that could possibly be good in any event. Um, I just can't.
Can you, uh, do you think that there needs to be a cap even if we can't sort of? Or in general? Yeah. So do you think that there needs to be a cap somewhere?
Yes, I think that, um, you know, there are issues around the, particularly with dogs because they're so vastly different. I mean, cats are pretty uniform. Um, but um sort of that takes into account a number of issues. But yes, I mean, I, I think these numbers do matter and it matters um that, that the dog or cat is, is allowed to have the best life, you know, not just be um a production male.
You also mentioned in your submission that there's an oversupply of animals, of companion animals. Um, what causes this oversupply and how do we avoid it? Because obviously when there's an oversupply, councils and rescue groups and everyone's at capacity, animals are being put down that are healthy, um, how do we deal with this?
Well, I guess, um, in terms of dogs, um, that, that during the pandemic, I think, you know, most even shelters and pounds were rehoming a huge number of dogs. Um, but I think there is always that difficult remnant population in pounds and shelters of dogs who've been surrendered because they have behavioural issues. And why do they have behavioural issues? Possibly because they came from a puppy farm in the first place. Also possibly because the new owner was given no education and made no investment of time into things like a puppy preschool. Um, so those things sort of conflate to create a pet who is just really quite sad and difficult to rehome without, you know, lots and lots of intensive rehabilitation. For cats, you know, our big problem is still the fact of unowned, semi-owned, undisexed and, and, you know, that is something that we just continue to work on with de-sexing and public education around de-sexing. Um, the majority of owned registered cats are de-sexed, so it's, it's trying to capture um those who are the sort of casual, casually owned, if you like. We've started a new programme called Adopt a Stray to try to address that. So where people, would you like to adopt them and then we're providing really heavily subsidised um de-sexing and microchipping, the first vaccination and registration and all of that to help people who are in that situation, who've become quite attached but can't necessarily afford to do all the things.
Hmm, hmm, thank you. Um, one, one thing that, um, you know, a lot of people sort of said that they support the legislation that's been proposed with a few tweaks to it. And one tweak that we'd heard about um in the last day of inquiry was um some consideration of brachycephalic features into animals being intentionally further bred into these animals. Um, and I think you raised it in your submission as well, um, for cats. Um, can you tell us a bit more about what the issues are here and, and what sort of restrictions can we place around breeding um to ensure that animals aren't continually bred into a, a life of suffering?
I think part of that has to come from the breed organisations and they, they need to look at, if, if they are endorsing a breed standard that is inherently unhealthy and dangerous for the animal, they need to amend that breed standard. Um, I think I have seen in a documentary some time ago, images of dogs from about, you know, eighty, a hundred years ago in, in Britain and what they looked like as a breed standard then and what they look like now. And they have just been, they have bred to extremes. And it's, it's really quite obscene because that, it's a, it's a deliberate attempt to achieve a look with no regard for the animal's health. So I think as we said, you know, um, Paul McGreavy um has argued about, you know, the things that we need to be looking at are temperament and good health. Um, so I think that's something where you can get expertise from, from vets basically and, um, you know, experts in animal genetics and so on. And, and I think the public really has to um learn more about what they regard as cute is not cute. I am, I just hate it and some are seeing people, you know, they'll, they think they're doing a nice job walking their dog and it's the afternoon, the footpath's boiling, it's a tiny dog who can hardly breathe and with all their, you know, all their features are squished in and they're panting and their paws are being burned and it's like, what? Because this dog, you know, you liked the look of them? That, that's to me really obscene. But, you know, does, maybe, you know, people need to understand they're supporting cruelty when they like um these extreme features.
Thank you. Um, thank you. Just one quick question and hello again and thank you for, um, your submission and for appearing. Um, possibly a silly question, but we hear a lot about um guardian arrangements when it comes to dog breeding. Does a similar thing happen with cats?
Not silly, I've got that right there.
We could both be silly.
And I understand it. I think there are, and this may also happen in the dog world. I know it happened in the cat world, how wide-spiritous I don't know, that um someone might have, you know, a, a two or three female cats and then they link up with someone who has the entire male. And, you know, they, again, this is like with your registered pedigrees, but they really know the history of like all the, all the heritage of all the parents and grandparents. Um, so that's not so much doing the guardian thing, but it means that the cats are living in a normal home with their owner happens to also be their breeder, but they're, they're living in a, in a nice kind of home environment. They meet another cat, they come home, they have their kittens, you know, they're finding homes for the kittens, but it's a kind of, most of the time, they're, they're living in a home environment. Um, I don't know about people, I, my understanding is most registered breeders um are de-sexing before they rehome.
So you're not aware of like a situation where a cat breeder will sell a kitten on the basis that the kitten has to come back for breeding?
I've not heard that. Um, I think there's, like, breeders work with other breeders, but I've not had them working with like the person who's adopted a kitten.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's got a minute or so to wrap up before we finish. Um, if there's anything you'd like to say that you think hasn't been said, if you'd like to put on the record, or if you think there's been any, any of your testimony that community members may have misconstrued or taken out of context.
Thank you.
Do you want to tidy up?
Um, I think just to make the point that there was some really good work being done on the pet registry um quite recently and I think it went into, you know, it was on hold for a little while it may be. I think that is really critical that we get the companion animal register and the New South Wales Pet Registry um at optimal functionality and working and doing the best things they can possibly do because I think they're critical factors in the issue of lifetime traceability and accountability and, and I think that that is a very, very important vehicle.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe you took anything on notice, so thank you very much. And once the community members get the, the transcript from Hansard, they'll, there may well be some further questions coming your way, in which case the secretary will get in touch with you and you'll have 21 days to get those responses back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would Mr. Secorwood maybe be in touch? He said to say hello.
Thank you. I've been suggesting he needs another cat, but so far.
We'll put that on the transcript for you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, community members, we're breaking for lunch and we shall be back at twelve, no, that's not right, at one thirty.
One thirty.
One thirty. We now have two witnesses uh with us via Webex. Um, so I'll get, um, if I can get, I will start with Mr. Croft. If you could state your name and uh the capacity upon which you're attending before this inquiry and then take either the oath or affirmation, which I believe has been emailed through to you.
Sure, thank you. Uh, my name's Brett Croft. I'm the Director of Planning and Environment at Murray River Council, New South Wales Local Government, Chilwell area. Um, I'm a witness today for, for this hearing. Uh, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Uh, thank you. And I think we have Mr., um, Neil Southorn, is that how I pronounce that? Uh, and if so?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, well, if you could provide your, your name, the capacity upon which you're attending before this, uh, this inquiry and then take either the oath or affirmation.
So Neil Southorn, I'm the Director of Environmental Planning and Building Services at Bathurst Regional Council. Uh, I'll read the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Okay, thank you. And just for the, the information for community members, we were also to have someone from Verreganshire Council uh with us today, but they're unable to make it. So if you've got any questions for Verregans, just we put those on, on notice for them. Um, so, uh, Mr. Croft, Mr. Southorn, the way this will work is I'll uh provide you with an opportunity for a brief sort of two-minute opening statement. Um, we'll go into questions and then at the end of the, the session with the, the committee, I'll allow you a, a minute or so to sort of wrap up. So if there's anything that hasn't been said that you think you would like to put on the record, or if there's any information or evidence that's been provided, you think that in some way may have been misconstrued or has sort of been taken in a, in a, a different manner that you would like to correct, you'll get a minute or so at the end to do that. Um, and so on that basis, we'll, uh, I'll, I'll go to Mr., um, Mr. Croft, if you could um maybe open up a brief opening statement.
Sure, thank you. Um. Where I'll probably start is basically back in uh 2018, Victoria's the first state to introduce tighter restrictions to companion animal breeding. Now, um, with our council area being right on the border, what it has meant is that large-scale breeders have actually just relocated across the river um and started to set up on, on our, our side of the river. Um, our council was um embroiled in a, a single case that had a lot of media coverage et cetera for Thar, for a developed application of Thar Road and Mamma. Uh, we were receiving over 3,000 petitions um in relation to that actual um case. Since then, um, we understand it was amendments to the Prevention of Cruelty in Animals Act. Uh, there was a review or renewal of the Animal Welfare Code of Practice for breeding cats and dogs. Um, however, we hoped that the code of practice would align closer to Victoria, which hasn't happened. And basically that, um, the Proctor Prevention of Cruelty in Animals Act has in, um, provided additional or harsher um penalty units for cruelly animals. However, our council and our community feel that, um, that's reactive after the fact and that, um, our SPCA, which are a lead agency in, in animal welfare, um, don't have the resources or facilities to, um, to actually undertake regular inspections et cetera. So, um, what our council did was we drafted a policy, but the problem with the policy that was, um, specific to Murray River Council is that, um, we cannot go above and beyond or we cannot be more onerous than what state legislation is. And therefore, um, we haven't been able to, um, provide any, um, further, I guess assurance around approving, uh, appropriate development in our council area. And we are very limited by the disconnect between the Animal, um, or Prevention of Cruelty in Animals Act, Animal Welfare Code of Practice and their linkages to our planning system. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. And, uh, and Mr. Southorn, just a brief opening statement.
There's two parts to my commentary. The first part is that, uh, Bathurst, uh, has the Rockleigh Valley Puppy Farm in its LGA. Uh, we have recently gone through the development assessment process for that particular project and I can comment about that. It's one where, uh, the DA process worked for us. Um, there was a lot of input, a lot of submissions, not as many as we just heard on the other one. Um, uh, there was, uh, properly considered, uh, all of the issues that were raised, ultimately resulting in approval. So I can comment about that if the committee wishes me to further. Uh, my second, uh, commentary runs around, uh, the, the proposals in the Companion Animals Amendment Puppy Farms Bill, um, and the, uh, implications that has for local government. Uh, I'm worried about the administrative burden that that will create for council, which is unresourced. Um, uh, I'm worried about, uh, the requirement on local government to justify its decisions, uh, uh, which go beyond, uh, normal planning issues, but go to the suitability of people and their ability to meet expenses and so on. Um, I'm worried about, uh, the expectation on councils to, uh, to be intervening, um, potentially seizing animals. Uh, those animals could be pregnant or with, in pup. Uh, those animals could be pregnant or with impug, uh, and that creates a burden of responsibility uh onto to councils. Um, I'm worried about the need to give notice and receive submissions in part of those administrative processes, the obligation to report in seven days. Um, I'm worried about uh the logic behind a maximum number of breeding animals. Um, if a number is set, uh, why not two more than that, four more than that, et cetera? And that that council will be embroiled in trying to mediate those sorts of disputes. Um, I'm worried about the availability of vets in regional areas to provide the services which will be required of them to breeders. Um, and whilst this um is outside my uh my professional responsibility, but I do have a an interest um in mandating staff ratios. Um, I did make submission, Bathurst Council made submission to the uh recent inquiry into uh regional and rural health services, uh where mandatory ratios were were not taken up and yet they're proposed here for companion animal breeding. So there's a basket of things there as well, um, and uh I might leave it at that for the moment.
Thanks, Mr. Uh, Mr. Southhorn. I'm certain those community members will explore some of those issues with you in the next 45 minutes or so. Um, I'm going to open the the questioning before I hand over to others. Can I, it's predominantly my questions at this point in time will be to Mr. Croft. Mr. Croft, um, your your council is pretty unique in its location. Um, means that the implementation of similar legislation in Victoria meant that there would be, um, that there has been cross, cross-river, cross-border um movement. Can I, I've got a series of questions around this. The first thing is, um, how difficult uh is it that someone who may be breached with um uh animal cruelty issues in Victoria, who then relocates to New South Wales uh to open a facility? Is this, is this a a big issue, um, do you think? Uh, and in general terms, how should that be rectified?
Okay, um, from my perspective, in general terms, um, if people are convicted in Victoria, for instance, and um, and I will say that one of the cases, we had that scenario put to us. Um, we cannot consider that in New South Wales. So we had legal advice that was provided to us around that and that in its own right, we could not consider. Um, so, um, how big of an issue it is, um, I think I've just sort of answered probably that that question. Um, that it is an issue, a massive issue, um, depending on how, I guess, the the seriousness and those type of things with the convictions that happened in Victoria, um, what we can't consider under the planning system.
Okay, so, you know, we've been advised today that the South Australians are now looking at similar um legislative reform in coming, coming months, um, which will create further issues on on that border. Is this an issue that the committee should make recommendation to the government to to um somehow find a legislative remedy to?
Yes, yes. Um, I think you asked me a first, I guess, a solution. Um, one of the, one of the solutions we hoped to have was, um, I guess, a couple of parts. One was the Animal Welfare Code of Practice for breeding cats and dogs to align closer to what what is best practice um in Australia. There's no national code around that. Um, it's, it's pretty much every state having differences. So, um, we hope that that would actually, um, and I think the landmark case from Oscar's Law in Victoria, um, some would say is a benchmark for animal breeding. Um, but others would say that it's, it's, um, it does impact commercial viability for um to legitimate businesses breeding, um, breeding cats and dogs or one dog in particular. So, um, I believe that there is a way to do it. Um, legislative reforms would need to occur to allow um council to consider um much more details or a lot more, um, I guess, benchmarking numbers of dogs, um, the amount of litters they have, those type of things. Um, I think the welfare side of things in the code of practice um is okay, but again, there's no consistency right across um any state. So my suggestion would be that would be the starting point. Whether New South Wales wants to enter into a state, a SEP, State Environmental Planning Policy, I understand that the Minister for Planning is is in, uh, or is is reforming the planning system. Um, but there is also an opportunity to allow councils to choose whether they want breeding facilities in their local government area by simply updating the definition of what is animal boarding and training establishment in New South Wales. So that's featured under the standard instrument, the Local Environment Plan. If it was separated out to separate our training, um, our training and animal boarding uh facilities to remove the word breeding out of that, then you could have a standalone definition of what constitutes breeding and then each council could make a decision as to um whether they wish to have um those type of facilities in their own local government area. But I still, I still believe that we need a national code around this to get consistency.
Yep. Um, Mr. Croft, one of the, one of the um suggestions has been a fit and proper person test. Uh, so that if an individual has been, you know, breached for animal welfare issues in Queensland and wants to relocate to uh to New South Wales to open up another facility, um, that's that in New South Wales, legislative legislation is fixed with the fit and proper person test. You would then be able to measure whether against that, whether or not they're able to open a facility. Um, does that, does that assist the consideration of a development application, do you think? Or, um, is there a better way?
It will really depend on how that's featured in through the the state planning system. Um, um, because section 4.1 of the Environmental Planning Assessment Act is very specific around what we can consider making decisions. So, um, a link to that fit and proper person test would need to be demonstrated through that legislation or through another part of legislation that links it.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to ask a couple of quick questions to Mr. Southhorn. Um, the committee uh was allowed an opportunity to uh visit the facility at Rockleigh and so we, some of us took up that opportunity. Um, in the, in the process of considering that development application, did council look elsewhere to assist in giving consideration to that development application in determining the conditions of consent? Uh, and if so, um, what did, what did council draw upon to assist them in making the, making the determination?
So, uh, as it transpired, uh, we didn't look too far to contemplate other proposals of like or dislike, dissimilar uh nature. Um, we had lengthy discussions with the proponent prior to lodgment, which is always a good thing. Uh, we were relatively satisfied that the proposal was a genuine one um and that uh the proponent um committed to best practice implementation. Uh, that subsequently uh featured in the documents as submitted. Um, and indeed, uh, went a long way towards satisfying the community, the council uh that it could in fact approve that development.
Okay, and sorry, before I hand over to Ms. Hurst, just one quick question um to Mr. Croft. Mr. Croft, in your opening statement, you mentioned that because of the um legislative arrangements being implemented in Victoria, that people coming across uh the river. Um, as a matter of interest, um, how many, what's this? Can you provide some sort of information around the increase in activity in breeding facilities in your shire? Like, is there a number? Is there an increased number or some of these are legal that you don't know about?
Yeah, um, the illegal ones is probably one of those ones that's really on track. Um, having said that, that's sort of based on, on, I would be asking RSPCA um around their advice because generally they, they get requests for for action at some illegal ones. Um, from the stats that I have, it's between four and six DAs have been issued and approved for, um, or like what I determine is um commercial dog breeding facilities since the introduction of the Victorian legislation. And I've got another one that's currently under assessment at the moment. Um, all up, we're talking about 800 to 1,000 breeding dogs at the moment.
Sorry, that's across, across all six?
That's across the whole fourth, you know, four, uh, four to six since the DA, since the last, since 2018, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to hand over now to Ms. Hurst.
Thank you. Uh, my question's also to Mr. Croft. Um, the mayor of Murray River stated in an ABC media article that the council has seen a 500% increase in development applications um for these large-scale dog breeding facilities um over the last year. And that, that was a media article um some months ago. Is, and so it sounds like from, from what you're saying that, that that level of development applications is ongoing? Is, are you still finding a massive increase in these development applications?
Yes, yes. And, um, in our talkings with adjoining, some adjoining council areas, and I know, um, uh, one of the other witnesses not, not here today, um, but I know Edward River are experiencing the same thing, which directly joined Murray River Council about 40 minutes away from the closest point to the border. So we asked, and I think we, I believe we had two to three smaller scale commercial breeding facilities prior to the introduction of the Victorian legislation to the day. We've currently got four to six additional ones since then and another one that's under assessment currently. So, so those numbers are correct.
Um, and I know your council, and you mentioned this as well, um, in your opening statement, you had a situation for a development application for over 320 dogs. Um, someone was linked to that particular development application with a history of animal abuse. Um, and I understand that councils were quite concerned about it, um, but they ultimately determined that they did not have the power to block it. Um, can you tell us a bit about this and and the concern around councils sort of being hamstrung on these development applications, even if they do have some concerns around it?
Sure. Um, and I'd ask the chair to jump in any time. I have provided those two places, I believe, advice to the committee um last Friday around that. Um, in particular, that summary of advice, um, basically was saying that, um, council can consider submissions made by the public. Um, the obligation, council ensure they assess the DA and codes of planning principles. Um, it did go on to say that although there's a social or moral reasons raised by individuals making submissions, there would be a risk to council to refuse a DA if the applicant otherwise satisfied the matters set out in section point, uh, 4.15 of the act. So our council, um, reviewed that, um, legal advice prior to making a decision at the council level um and wasn't comfortable in the, um, I guess, the the likelihood of appeal or a challenge under that scenario.
Yeah, I know, I understand the notion that it's quite stressful for councils that are already feeling under-resourced to be nervous about rejecting one of these development applications. Um, local government in New South Wales said to the media that councils were somewhat powerless when it came to assessing applications for puppy farms as there is no basis in legislation to draw upon requirements of the breeding code or to consider whether the proponent is a fit and proper person. Um, are these changes that you would like to see put in place so that councils did have some power around these development applications when they're actually put forward?
I'll answer that in two parts. It's really depending on the state government as to whether they, where they see the decision that needs to be made. And one part that would be is, um, my suggestion would be if that was the case and, um, and I think the other witness alluded to it, is that councils don't have the resources and can't be everything to everybody in terms of what we assess and make planning decisions. What we need is um a consistency or a level of consistency, whether it's a national code, a state code, whatever it is, that actually clearly links our planning legislation for us to be informed and us to make um decisions based on or referencing those types of codes of practice or or standards. At the moment, um, it's very, it's not, it's not linked. Um, the code of practice, unless it's embedded in our development control plans, and even though, even if it is, we still have issues if an application um meets the other requirements of the DCP and the Environmental Planning Assessment um principles. Um, we still have issues with that.
Because you can't consider animal welfare, can you? Unless, other than through public outcry, I suppose, which is what you were sort of saying. But if they meet the other requirements, it's still probably not strong enough.
Correct. We can consider, we can consider public submissions, um, or public interest is what's known, is what's referenced in there. However, if that's the, on balance, if that's the only thing that's um not being met in terms of how we assess the application, then we have no reason to refuse it. And legal advice according to that way is that it would be risky for council. Um, we'd be opening ourselves up to appeal on that basis if we, if we refuse it only on that issue.
And do you feel like councils are bearing the brunt of public concern and outcry about these mass breeding facilities? Like, because you're actually the ones that are responsible for approving the DAs, um, even though you don't have a, a great degree of power or resources to actually block them, um, is it still a lot of pressure on the councils and on the councillors?
Absolutely. Um, like, I know, um, when the Thora Road example came up, which really brought this issue to light um back two years ago or eight months ago, um, our social media pages through council were inundated with um hate mail and those type of things around council making decision. And, um, and as people would understand is that the state legislation is us for to make a decision under. It's not our legislation, it's not our decision-making tools. And we can't go above and beyond what the legislation states. Thank you.
Ms. Vanessa.
Thank you, I might just stick with you, Mr. Croft. Um, just looking at those numbers that you're providing us, um, an animal uh association surveyed um all the councils in New South Wales about DA approvals for breeding facilities and yours was one of them. And it seems from the data provided that you have six out of the eight um uh breeding facilities adjoining the Victorian border in terms of DA, successful DA applications. Um, given that it seems like it's a localized issue in terms of the border, would it be fair to say that your proposal or your suggestion about doing it via an LEP might be the best solution rather than a standalone act?
Um, I guess that, what I would say is that your data of what you're, what you've got in front of you would be approved DAs. Um, it wouldn't include the ones that are currently under assessment or ones that are out for further information. And we know that the planning system recently and the integration of the planning portal has delayed a lot of applications in that sense. So there may be others um out there that are worrying for it. And I do know, talking with Edward River Council, that they are experiencing a few inquiries and puppy farm applications now. Um, I'm not sure as to where they're at in terms of the, um, in terms of the applications themselves. Um, in answer to your question, um, a localized issue, we could include a, um, I guess, a definition in the, in our LEP. But the problem is it's the standard instrument is where the definition has come from. So therefore, if you change the standard LEP, that'll change it for the state. Um, therefore, look, it will allow each council to make a decision as to how they deem what's a breeding facility as, as opposed to a animal training um and boarding establishment. Um, but again, as I mentioned before, there's no consistent standards um around that. There's no real links to the animal um breeding facilities type, I guess, to, I guess, guidelines or or anything around that in a planning sense, there's still very poor links.
Okay, so perhaps I would get a clearer picture on, on the extent of this because the data that was given to me was that you had three approved dog facilities within the last three years. Um, and there was one that was still underway, but you said obviously there's been a bit of a backlog with the planning system and and what have you. Perhaps on notice, could you provide to the committee as to how many are out for more information? Um, just so we can get a more, I guess, concrete view of the wall in terms of how many are coming across the border?
Sure, just to be clear, I can, um, if the committee's happy, I'm happy to provide all the stats on approved DAs for animal, animal breeding facilities and ones that are currently under assessment.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. Um, in going back to, in your opening statement, you talked about how you received, I think, three, 3,000 submissions or petitions regarding this one particular development. How many of those 3,000 submissions or petitions were actually from residents within the local area? And how many were actually from without or outside the local area?
Uh, I don't have that information with me, um, apologies.
No, it's all right. Would you, would you be able, is that information available or would you, would you be able to take it on notice? Or it's just not something you gather?
It'll, well, it's very hard. I can, I can give you some information. Uh, I guess what I'd say is that, is that, um, when they put their addresses, they're not clear as to, we have to cross-reference our rate system as to whether they're actually have a second house or et cetera, depending on where they're putting their address down, that's all.
Yeah, sure. Um, I might just go to you, uh, Mr. Southhorn. Um, in your opening statement, you were talking about obviously some of your concerns and obviously one was the resourcing for, I guess, what we call compliance officers. Um, can you talk a little bit more about? Can you talk a little bit more about those concerns in terms of what you, what costs you would foresee in, in, I guess, upskilling those compliance officers in, in this new legislation and, and their new duties and under this legislation? And do you have any forecasted costs as to what this would be passed on to rate payers?
So it's a little bit anecdotal, haven't quantified it with a model, but my initial reaction is I'd need two new rangers and a person supporting them for administrative work. So I'm going to say three, three new staff, multiply that by, by whatever the dollars is on a salary plus on costs, plus a vehicle or two, plus office space. And you mentioned skills, so there are skills in these functions which, I mean, I have to go through the detail a bit more, but they, they look to be a higher order of skill than, than just someone on the, on the street doing parking patrol and so on. There's a high degree of communication required, engaging with people, a high degree of being in tune with animal welfare, which isn't always a matter of just reading a guideline and assessing an animal. There's quite a different skill set there.
Okay, so I guess to press a bit further on that, how many of your current ranger staff would need to go through this upskilling process do you envision? Or do you have staff that you think you'd be comfortable, they'd be able to roll out straight away, or how many would you have to upskill in those, those higher order?
I have one staff member who would be close to that level of skill, the others would need upskilling, plus there's the administrative support to, to manage the paperwork.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Searle?
My question is to Mr. Croft. You were saying the, you were talking about the sort of legal advice you'd had about the difficulties associated with relying on the public interest component only to deny DA approval. Should we infer from that that it would be useful for your organisation and all local government bodies to have the legislation make it very clear about the grounds upon which local government bodies could approve or refuse approval of such facilities? To make it clear that, you know, you can free from legal doubt, make a merit decision based on public submissions around issues. Apologies, apparently I wasn't talking into the microphone. Did you hear me, Mr. Croft?
Yeah. My answer to that would be probably a little bit general in response, but the legislation is written for a number of applications, not just animal breeding facilities. And my concern would be if you give the public interest clause in the EPA Act more weight, councils would spend all their time in NCAP and other local avenues fighting for whatever reason, so.
Well, so on the one hand, you're concerned about a lack of legal clarity, and when I'm suggesting that you begin giving legal clarity, there's some other problems with it, so would you like legal clarity?
Yeah, so I think lack of legal, legal clarities around on merit, I believe, I still believe that the Thora Road was approved based on, on the information that we had, and it was merits-based. It depends on how you view the legislation around the public interest and how much weight that actually has. Currently, it's not weighted in the environmental planning assessment system.
But if we're, for example, talking about an application from a body or a person that has a criminal conviction, particularly one for cruelty against animals, that goes beyond mere sort of liking or not liking the kind of facility, that's sort of in a very different realm, isn't it? That's a very tangible basis upon which to not approve.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, well, those are my questions for you. I've got one question for Mr. Southern.
Southorn.
Southorn?
Southorn.
Southorn, sorry, I sit corrected. I'll, I'll come back to that.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd?
Thank you, and good afternoon to you both. Can I just pick up, Mr. Southorn, on the comment you were making in response to my colleague in relation to how many staff you'd need to do a one per year inspection? Three staff seems like quite a lot. How many facilities do you think there are in Bathurst?
I don't have an exact number, and what worries me is the ones I don't know about. So we will need to respond to complaints, we'll need to respond to social media tip-offs, we'll need to be able to respond to, to those other sources of advice. So we only have one large dog breeding facility, but I can be certain there are others out there.
Thank you. Mr. Croft, just coming back to the issues that, that you've raised, particularly in relation to the needing to, I guess, fit any rejection of a puppy farm DA into existing legislation, and the, I guess, the sensitivities around the public interest angle. Do you have a sense of whether, I guess, whether any amount of public opposition would make a difference in terms of the legal advice and whether or not you could reject an application? For instance, you know, you've mentioned maybe three thousand submissions weren't sufficient. What if you had, you know, ten thousand or twenty thousand? Do you still believe that the, you know, under the legal advice, that you would be still obliged to, I guess, effectively ignore those?
Look, the legal advice was, was fairly clear, in my view, that if all the other matters set out in four point one five of the Act were met, then it would be a risk for council to make a decision just based on that public interest clause. I don't have a view as to how many that would be, whether it's twenty thousand or whatever. But I should clarify, it was council laws that were making the decision, not, not council officers, or not a, not a delegate of the CEO. So therefore, it may have swayed council laws in making decision, I don't know, I can't answer to that.
I've spoken to quite a few community members in various areas who have been concerned that despite all the evidence as to, you know, this seems to be a familiar tale, actually, all the evidence as to how unsuitable the operator of the puppy farm might be, and all the, the number of submissions that have been received that councillors have still approved. This evidence you're giving here today perhaps goes some way to explaining why that might be the case for, for other councils as well. When you write back to those people who have put in a submission, do you make it clear that the, the reasons why it was still approved were because of the legal constraints? Do people know?
I believe we have, and I believe we've done some media release through the mayor and the CEO even over the last eight months around, basically, our council's been hamstrung by the legislation, the state legislation, what we can consider, yes.
Yeah, right. So people are aware that, that it's not necessarily something sort of nefarious going on in the background, it's a, the, the reason that they're not being listened to is not the councillor's fault, but a fault of our legislation.
I believe so, yes, and I honestly, I'd hope that message is getting through.
Thank you.
Mr., you've brought Mr. Searle back to the microphone, so, Mr. Searle?
Mr. Southorn, you were, I think, earlier giving some evidence about your concerns around a number, a threshold for regulation of puppy farming. Can you just step us through why that is? I would have thought that clarity in legislation would have actually been of great assistance to councils in making an assessment of these things, i.e. if there was a threshold and, you know, a puppy breeder fell below that, then clearly, you know, they wouldn't be caught by any regulatory regime. If they're at a given number or above, I can understand why people in the committee might have an argument from time to time about whether that's the right number, but it's not one that council would choose. Why is setting a threshold number not a good thing and would actually assist councils?
In a general sense, planning, the planning system does benefit from certainty, from numbers, from guidelines, and I agree with much of what Mr. Croft has said about there needs to be consistency and robustness in the planning system with these sorts of things. But whenever a number is chosen, and it's not just the number of breeding animals in this particular context, but also a height of a building or setback off a front boundary, inevitably, at the margin, there's nearly always some sort of dispute debate. And so if the number is chosen, let's say it's ten, and in its enforcement functions, council attends the site and finds there are twenty, it could be that the animals are very fit and healthy, it could be that there's no impacts happening, that they're housed in very superior accommodation and looked after and not abused, then what do we do? Do we seize those animals? Do we impose that number because, because it's the number? And so whilst we appreciate that guidance will need to be set, there needs to be some, some logic to what those numbers are.
Well, we have received evidence, including today, about logistics, about how, how easy or difficult it is to care for a certain number of breeding animals and their offspring. So, you know, you would assume, wouldn't you, that if the parliament was to set a number, whether it be ten or whether in fact it'd be five, that it would be informed by those considerations? That would be useful, wouldn't it?
Certainly, but I don't think the committee should underestimate that when council is the enforcement, authorised officers, that we're at the front line trying to, to deal with what those numbers mean. So as long as there's a well-conceived approach to those numbers, then they'll be what they are.
I think both Mr. Beach and I have served on local government for a number of years, and we're very familiar with the difficulties faced by councils and their officers and staff in enforcing these matters. Thank you, Mr. Southorn.
Yeah. Mr. Croft, you've got your hand up, so I'm not sure whether that's accidental or whether you would like to speak.
If I could add to that, if that's okay?
You can.
Sure. I actually agree, I think the numbers or, or numbers of breeding pairs or number of litters and those type of things will add value to what council do. My concern, and I want to make it clear with, with this committee, is that local governments in New South Wales continue to get loaded up with accountability from state government, and this could be going into that direction as well. My concern is that we assess everything on a, on a risk-based decision-making model for how we task our rangers and our compliance officers to do so. Therefore, I believe the numbers, setting the numbers is crucial to that, so that we can apply a rig around that. But I would also remind the committee that currently you have an operating model around animal welfare, which is the RSPCA, the legal agency. The problem we have is that our contact or regional officer is located in Orange, which is eleven hours away from Nauna. So therefore, regular inspections and resourcing for RSPCA is not adequate in my view of the environment.
Yep, thank you. Okay, Ms. Hurst, got some more questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And it's interesting that, to hear from you, Mr. Croft, that the closest RSPCA officer is eleven hours away, that's, that's quite concerning. I'm not sure if it's the same situation in Bathurst, but my questions are for Mr. Southorn. And I guess, you know, it would be quite different for Mr. Croft if it's eleven hours away, but I just wanted to highlight and follow-up from my colleague Abigail Boyd's question in regards to that, those three full-time staff. So the, the legislation that's part of this inquiry doesn't actually require councils to investigate unknown puppy farms or to investigate them actually at all. The powers still obviously remain with the Animal Welfare League and the RSPCA. So I'm just wondering then, how did you come up with this figure of three full-time staff when we're talking about yearly inspections for registered animal breeding businesses, large-scale animal breeding businesses?
In large part because we will be, I believe, I fear, we'll be embroiled in investigations of illegal activities to much greater extent than we are.
Sorry, Mr. Southon, so I was just clarifying at the beginning of that question, that there's nothing in the legislation that would require councils to do those investigations, that the RSPCA and the Animal Welfare League would definitely still be enforcement agencies, and so it wouldn't be up to council to do those investigations. So I'm just wondering where you came up with the three people, considering that won't be a role required of council?
It may not be a, a role prescribed in the legislation, but it will be an expectation of the community.
And I just want to go into another aspect of that, because in Victoria, and we heard this morning that there's been no complaints from any councils that have, have taken on this role, and what the councils have been able to do and what, what this new legislation has allowed for as well, that councils can actually charge a registration fee. And so what have, what I've, what's been reported is happening in Victoria, is that councils have charged a registration fee to the larger-scale breeders that are registering each year, and that actually covers the council's costs, so councils aren't actually out of pocket at the end of the day for taking on these yearly inspections and looking into these registered breeders. And therefore, it wouldn't obviously be money that comes from either council's pocket or from rate payers. So what are your concerns then, if the money's not coming from rate payers or from the council's pocket, what, what are your concerns with that model?
That's a slightly different question. The first set of questions went to the number of EFTs that might be required to provide the service.
Yeah, so this was a brand-new question. Yeah, so this is a brand-new question.
Yep, so it's a separate question in regard to what income streams might be available to offset council's costs, and if there are income streams available, that would be welcome.
Okay, fantastic. So you'd be supportive of the measures if, if those costs were covered in other ways?
As a general principle, but as always, the devil's in the detail, and I'll come back to, it needs to be this considered logic to the thresholds and other triggers to enforce them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A bit of a cheeky question, really, this is the Chair, but Mr. Southorn, first I'll ask you and then look at the same question, Mr. Croft. So we've been talking about trying to bring a regime in place that'll capture some of the intensive breeding facilities for pups. The committee's also looking at intensive breeding facilities for kittens as well, so but can I just, do you have a sense, I guess the first question, part of the question is, do you have a sense that there are what we would deem illegal breeding facilities, pups and kittens, in your council, and if so, do you have a sense of how many? I'll start with Mr. Southorn.
Thank you. No, I don't have a sense of how many, other than, I think we all know there'll be some. And what I think drives my concerns is that the tighter the regulations become, the more onerous they're perceived to be, people will avoid them and go underground. And so there's a risk that whatever the number is now will increase.
Okay, and Mr. Croft?
I concur with Mr. Searle's comments. I believe there's probably, there will be a few operating in our Mariva Council area. I know of one that was under investigation. Our powers of entry are very limited for local government around Hep to access those properties, given we've only got powers of entry under the Panzer Animal Act and the Local Government Act. So even if we did go in and inspect or investigate, our powers are limited. But I believe, yes, there would be a number of these facilities operating, but I guess it goes back to my, my earlier points, is establishing some level of consistency around numbers, numbers of litters and those type of things will go a long way to, I guess, assisting in the decision-making model of this, because I don't think our council wants to see, you know, a family, as in a human family, having two dogs and breeding with them and have to go through a full DA process to make sure that's legitimised. But there needs to be a number somewhere that needs to be derived that's fair and equitable, and whether it's commercial viability or not, that's up to the state, but it needs to be pointed out that it's not always the But it needs to be pointed out that it's not always the case that the number's actually linked to the better quality of those establishments, but it is an indicator.
Yep. And Mr Croft, my probably last question. I come from regional New South Wales, so I've got a bit of an idea about your council and your neighbouring council that may be encountering this issue. Councils that may be encountering this issue. Breeding of the pups in the facility is one thing. Once the pups are sold, how are they transported from those facilities? Now, this may not be a council issue, but I'm just trying to get a sense of transportation and logistics around once the pups are sold.
In talking with a commercial breeder, which is where we, and it was located in Barron, I won't say who it is, we actually invited our councillors out there to have a look at the facility and understand their business model a bit more. My understanding is they had a backlog or a list of puppies for the next five years at five to seven thousand dollars a pop, and they have been transported throughout Australia. So they're not just for the local area, they're actually going on aeroplanes and those sort of things over to Perth, Brisbane and other areas. So how they're transported, you're right, it's not really a council issue in terms of when they live, I mean, when they're operating on it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll just go around to the committee members, is there any other last questions?
Not from him, Mr Southall.
No, I think we're good, thank you. Now, did, sorry?
That was Lou.
Oh, Lou, sorry, Lou, do you have a question?
All fine, thanks. Yeah, all fine, thanks, Chair.
All fine, okay. Now, I believe Mr Croft might have taken some questions on notice, I'm not sure about Mr Southall, but in any case, the committee secretary will be in touch with you about that. And once the committee members receive the transcript from hand side, there may be some further questions on notice that you'll receive from the committee secretary. You'll have 21 days if you could get back to us with those responses. Thank you very much for your submissions and your time today, it's been very much appreciated. And thank you very much to what will be our last panel today. Could I get each witness, and I'll start from my left, you're right, if you could state your name, the capacity upon which you're appearing before us, and take the O4 affirmation, and I will start with Ms Robinson.
Hello.
Hello. Good to see you again.
You too. Suzanne Robinson, I'm Director Animal Welfare with the Department of Primary Industries. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Good to see Ms Black again, as well, back in too. Where are you going, Tara?
Tara Black, Deputy Director General Strategy and Engagement with New South Wales Department of Primary Industries. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yep, Wilma?
My name is Kim Louise Wilmer, I'm the Chief Animal Welfare Officer for the New South Wales Department of Primary Industry. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Up, Ms Dench.
Hi. Yes, Ally Dench is my name, I'm the Executive Director of Local Government, the Office of Local Government, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Ms Bishop?
Thank you, yes. My name's Karen Bishop, I'm the Director of Sector Performance and Intervention at the Office of Local Government, and I do solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, just a couple of minutes for a brief opening statement from both organisations, and then the way I'll run this is at the end, if there's a minute or so for each of the organisations, just to wrap up in case there's something that hasn't been said that you think should be put on the record, or if you think that, you know, your evidence has been misconstrued or somehow confused by the committee members, you get a chance to clean that up as well. So, is it Ms Black, will you be delivering the opening?
I will, yep.
Okay, well, where are you going?
Thank you. The New South Wales Government's submission outlines the regulatory arrangements for puppy breeding in New South Wales and the actions that the government has taken over the last five years to address community concerns. This includes education and enforcement campaigns to improve compliance, upgrades to the pet registry to improve traceability, and legislative amendments to increase penalties for animal welfare offences. We commonly see the terms puppy farm and puppy factory used to describe large-scale breeders who are failing to meet the welfare needs of their animals. But it's important to state at the outset that large breeders do not necessarily mean poor welfare outcomes, and this was reinforced by the previous parliamentary inquiry in 2015. It's also important to say upfront that while serious welfare issues in puppy factories are abhorrent and distressing, the data shows that these cases are actually quite rare. Breeders who sell puppies are by law required to meet the standards set in the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act, the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Regulation, and the Code of Practice for Breeding Cats and Dogs. The laws provide a range of compliance tools to the enforcement agencies based on the seriousness of the non-compliance, and New South Wales has some of the highest animal welfare penalties in Australia. It's important that any further action the government takes is based on evidence, and the Puppy Factory Task Force has provided us with some really important data about compliance issues in the puppy breeding industry. Since August 2020, the Task Force has inspected 468 breeding establishments and over 9,000 animals. These inspections resulted in 219 written notices, 66 penalty infringement notices, and three cases taken to court. Our analysis of the Task Force data shows that in the last six months, the rates of non-compliance are higher than we would like, but most of the issues relate to things like record-keeping and documentation requirements rather than serious animal welfare issues. But the level of non-compliance does highlight that we need to do more. So while we await the committee's report from this inquiry, we are also developing an awareness and education campaign for both breeders and consumers. We want everyone in the industry to understand and follow the legislative requirements, and we want to empower consumers to make informed decisions when buying a puppy. Over the last five years, we've taken a number of steps to improve welfare outcomes in breeding establishments, and will continue to take appropriate action based on science, evidence and community feedback. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with the committee today.
Thank you very much, and that sounded very much like a prepared statement. I was wondering if you might be able to hand that up to the secretariat and I can pass it over to the hand side, so you'll sound very polished in the, read very polished in the transcript. Local Government?
Yes, yes, thank you. The New South Wales Government understands the importance of pet cats and dogs to the wellbeing of families and individuals across our community, and also the New South Wales Government's committed to safeguarding animal welfare and providing a strong regulatory framework to promote responsible animal ownership in New South Wales. The government also understands that families and individuals have a fundamental responsibility to ensure the welfare of these pets, whether in the care of a breeder, their first or subsequent owner, a vet, a rehoming organisation or a council. The Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act 1979 is jointly administered by the Minister for Local Government and the Minister for Agriculture. However, operationally, the Minister for Agriculture and the Department of Primary Industry takes the lead on animal welfare matters. In June 2021, the government passed the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Amendment Act 2021, creating some of Australia's toughest suite of animal cruelty penalties, as my colleague has just also endorsed. This act dramatically increases penalties for animal welfare offences and expands the range of tools available to courts to effectively deal with animal welfare offences. These laws ensure penalties reflect the seriousness of animal welfare offences and send a clear message to those who commit abhorrent acts on animals. If you do the wrong thing, you will face severe consequences. Whilst this animal welfare responsibility sits under animal welfare laws, the Companion Animals Act of 1998 and the Impounding Act 93 is administered by the Minister for Local Government, the Honorary Wendy Tuckerman, and supports this outcome focusing on issues such as impounding, animal registration and rehoming. The Companion Animals Act provides for the lifetime identification and registration of companion animals and for the duties and responsibilities of their owners and others caring for them. The act also provides for a register of companion animals to help identify and track them throughout their lives, to better monitor and ensure their welfare, and to better monitor and support safe and ethical breeding practices. Breeders selling or people giving away cats and dogs must include an identifying number in all advertising, and this is either a microchip number, breed identification number or rehoming body number. The Responsible Pet Ownership Education Programme has been delivered, or has delivered a Living Safely with Dogs Programme to 6,015 preschools, reaching 158,640 children. The Living Safely with Pets Programme has also visited 7,572 primary schools, reaching 755,415 students. Whilst the act and register work to support these outcomes, the Minister for Local Government and OLG are committed to continual improvement of the companion animal systems in place to this end, and welcomes the opportunity to talk to you today and look forward to the findings of this review.
Thank you, Ms Dench, and that also sounded very much like a prepared statement, so same routine here, hand it up and...
My pleasure.
And it'll read very well in the transcript. I've just got a couple of questions before I then will hand over to the committee panels. But the first one is, seeing this is sort of the wrap-up of the hearings, I'll start with Primary Industries, but is there anything that's, I have no doubt you've been reading the transcripts and observing what's been going on, is there anything that you think you require a right of reply to or that you would like to clarify? And I'll go to Local Government with the same thing.
Probably nothing straight off the bat, but maybe at the end, if we don't get to the questions, there was a lot of territory covered, so.
It has been, and I intend to go to the government at the end to ask that. But general tidy-up question, is there anything that you would like covered that hasn't been covered? Local Government, was there anything that's been raised during the hearings that you think require a response before we go into questioning?
Similar, we'll certainly respond as we go through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then, first real question I've got here is, and it actually is for the Local Government, we've heard, and again today, actually it's in some of the transcripts, some of the submissions, but also today, about the microchipping failures. The chips, the microchips are failing, so the pet registry or the way in which we, I guess, track or trace or record the companion animals, the dogs and cats, just how well is that going, and how many people does it involve within your department to manage?
The microchipping itself?
No, the pet registry.
Oh, the pet registry. How many in the team have that covered?
Well, the pet registry, there's sort of two parts to it, there's the pet registry database, which we operate, which is probably got one person full-time dedicated who's been involved with the build of the original companion animals register. We've got a couple of other members in the team who would work primarily on pet registry issues, and then we also have the team of about four or five pet helpline people who work on emails and the calls, centre taking calls.
And so what sort of information is recorded in the pet registry?
So we've got owner details, address, name, et cetera, microchips. If somebody gets on and wants to register themselves as a breeder, they can get a breed identification number as well, and it's pretty much just standard information around where the pets are, where they live and the owner's details.
So if someone's, if a microchip fails to be read and they need to reinsert another microchip, how do they go about changing the microchip details on the pet registry? What's the process for that?
Well, the pet registry in 2016 was adapted so that people can go on and make their own changes. I will take on notice whether you can change the microchip number once it's actually gone in. I haven't had a lot of information today about microchips falling, so I will take that on notice if you don't mind and find out about that.
Okay, thank you. That would be good. And then, we've also had some information around public education, around responsible pet ownership, decision-making around buying or purchasing the right pet or acquiring the right pet for your circumstances. How much does, how much does the government spend on education programmes around responsible ethical pet ownership?
So we actually do have a fair bit of information that is on our website, and I think also on the Local Government website around, you know, buying a puppy, and I think what we've heard in the evidence to the hearings today and at the last one were that information is clearly not reaching people in the way that we would like it to. So I think we've recognised that we need to do a bit more work to make sure that that information is actually reaching our intended audience. We know that, sorry, is my boss calling me? We know, sorry, I've lost my train of thought now.
This is, this is about education and around responsible pet ownership.
Yep.
So the information you're providing, you're saying that you have a lot of information online, but listen to the evidence before this inquiry is evident that you need to do more.
Yeah, so we've started a bit of work on designing what could another education campaign look like, so we have done them in the past, and we are looking at doing another one of those in the near future, designed to give people the information that they need to make an informed decision about buying a puppy. So as you've heard, the demand is definitely there from consumers. Puppies' prices are very high at the moment, but we recognise that people don't always have the right, don't know what questions to ask or what to look for when they're making those decisions about what breed to buy and where to buy it from and what to look for when they're making those decisions. So that's a piece of work that we're planning to roll out later this year.
So just on that.
So when you say later this year, how much later?
Well, so one of the things we want to do is make sure that we're not just putting something out there, but actually co-designing it with key stakeholders to make sure that it actually reaches the intended audience, has the information that people need to hear, and actually is going to change people's behaviour. So I think there's probably some things that we can do quite quickly in terms of getting the information that we already have more visible and into the community, but perhaps some more longer-term stuff around changing people's behaviour and really understanding what's driving these decisions at the moment.
Sorry, yeah, just to follow up on that question, because if I'm, unless I'm Ms Hurst, Chair, your question was how much has the government spent on education campaigns? And the response I heard was, we need to do better.
Yep.
Can you tell us how much has been spent in the past, say, five years for each of those years, or have you got any information?
There's some information here about funding that's been provided to the RSPCA for education programmes. So there was an education centre in 2015, it was funded to the order of $2 million. And there's been renewal and extension of the adoption facilities in 2019 for $12 million.
Sorry, but in terms of education campaigns for the public?
Well, some of this funding has been used as part of an education campaign for the public, so the government hasn't done this directly, but they've given money to the RSPCA to undertake that.
So, sorry, the $12 million, you just mentioned that was that part of a package of things that included education, or was that solely education?
That was around expansion of the adoption facilities specifically.
Yeah, so that's not education.
Sort of is.
Can you take it on notice? I've just, I think the committee would like to get a bit of an idea about just how much is being spent by the government. It's probably two problems, one is how much do you allocate to third parties to undertake education, and how much do you undertake yourselves for education around animal welfare, particularly dogs and cats?
Yep, me too.
Okay, okay.
Could we answer?
Could we answer that?
We both...
Yeah, you need to go, yes.
We can give you some figures around what OLG has spent on pet education.
Absolutely, that would be very good, too.
Yeah, so Ally, do you want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, through the pet registry, 20% of what is gathered through the registration fees goes back out into education and back to council, 80% goes back to councils and 20% into education and also the registry, so it's about $1.2 million annually.
So I would like to qualify that, we have been spending that on the education programmes that Ally mentioned earlier, which have focused very much on schools, preschools, going to hospitals, and it's about families working with their pets and learning how to care for pets. And that is a contract that has been running, when it goes through the schools and it's running at optimum level, it works out about $1.2, $1.15 a year, depending on how many school visits they do. Ally mentioned the numbers before. Obviously with Covid, we were, had to bring that back a bit. So in the last year or so, the numbers of actual school visits have been right down. However, there is also an online training programme which gives a lot of information about caring for pets and looking after pets and things, and that has been running continuously. So we are looking to get that programme up to full scale again for the next 12 months, and so we're looking to spend about another $1.2 on that.
Ms Boyd?
Yeah, just, sorry, clarification again, I guess what this committee is looking at is the need for regulation versus it all being okay because there is sufficient information going out to the community for the community to work out what is an ethical facility, et cetera. So if we're talking about... So if we're talking about education, I guess, just to clarify, maybe you need to take this on notice for both of you, what we're looking for is how much is spent on educating the public about that point-of-sale for puppies? Not, not general dog, you know, this isn't about whether or not dog owners are responsible.
Yep, sorry.
We did, when we introduced the advertising ID, put out a programme then and invested $200,000 in a puppy programme, sort of identifying what the new rules are, what the risks are around puppy factories and helping purchasers. And that was in partnership with Animal Welfare League and RSPCA New South Wales.
What year was that?
I think it would have been about 2016 when we, around that time, when we were introducing that new legislation and that new requirement so that people knew what was required and purchasers knew how to, what they needed to do in terms of looking out when they're buying puppies.
Thank you. Now, I've got one question on a different tack, and then I'm going to hand over probably to Ms Boyd and then all other members will get to go. This morning, oh, sorry, this afternoon, we heard, we're talking to the councils from Birgern, that their nearest RSPCA officer is 11 hours away. I think regardless of your views of animal welfare in New South Wales, that just can't be acceptable. Surely we need to look at either increasing some funding to make sure we've got officers, whether it be RSPCA or Animal Welfare League, but to have them better situated around the region of New South Wales. Has that been raised with the department or has that been looked at by the department with regard to how far away some of these compliance officers, animal welfare officers are?
Not specifically. It is our understanding that the RSPCA is recruiting into that role and that they've had a roster in place to be able to service that area in the meantime. But they're in the process of recruiting into that position to be based down out of Albury.
That'd be closer, yeah. 11 hours is a fair way.
And we do have the three enforcement agencies as well, so also the Animal Welfare League and the New South Wales Police who are in those communities as well.
Yep. Look, I'm going to let others explore the rest of the four issues, so I'll start with Ms Boyd and Mrs Searle.
Could I ask you, perhaps this is a question to you, Ms Black, first. Why is New South Wales so far behind everyone else when it comes to regulating and stamping out puppy farms?
It's true that every state is kind of on an ongoing basis looking at their animal welfare legislation and at puppy factories as well. And so, you know, we do talk often with the other states and do try to, I suppose, adopt good ideas from other areas. But we do have strong rules already in New South Wales. As I said, we've got the POCTA Act, the regulation and the breeding code. And that does apply to anyone who's in the business of breeding cats and dogs for fee or reward. So there are high standards set in legislation already. And so I suppose, I suppose it comes back to the definition, what the definition of a puppy farm or puppy factory is. But we would say anyone who's not meeting the requirements in the breeding code, that is illegal. And we do have powers for the enforcement agencies to address those issues.
So could I ask, I guess let's take it to one particular example. There was a puppy farmer in the Hunter who, and you'll know the case of Strawberry, she's very famous now. I think, and it's been mentioned a number of times in this inquiry already. This was an operator of a puppy farm who had already come to the attention of the authorities. And then we have the incident with Strawberry and the, you know, puppies literally rotting inside her and vets not being called, and the most horrible of stories really. Sentenced last week, two people. The, I think he got $16,000 and something in fines, which as you know is just, you know, the same as selling a few puppies. And the co-operator of that facility got, I think, $4,000 fines. So importantly, both of those people, despite having a conviction against them for animal cruelty, are permitted to continue to run that puppy farm, albeit with a slightly reduced number of animals. We're looking at 105 breeding animals at that facility under the management of people who have been in the, you know, under the, I guess, scrutiny of the authorities for some time. Ms Dench, you referred to the severe consequences under our laws. Do you think, Ms Black, that that is a severe consequence for something like this?
So DPI administers animal welfare laws, we're not involved in the enforcement or the judicial process. Last year, we did put through an amendment to the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Act, which did significantly increase the penalties available to the courts. So we've now got new maximum penalties for cruelty.
With respect, I was there, I, yes, understand that. But we still had this situation, even if that was, and I thank my colleagues in the upper house, particularly in Hurst, for pushing for those additional penalties. But even with those penalties, we have a situation where this person, these people, are able to continue to run the facility with 105 dogs. How is that, the New South Wales Government's legislation working? How is that good enforcement?
So I suppose, as I said, DPI's role is to administer the legislation. And we do have significant penalties available in the laws for the courts and the enforcement agencies to apply. In that, I mean, that's a specific case that might be appropriate to ask the RSPCA, who did take forward that prosecution and were more intimately involved with the specifics of the case and did seek specific court orders in relation to that facility.
But with, with respect, you sat here before with the opening statement about how the laws are fine and we need better consumer education, et cetera. Clearly, we do not have a provision that prohibits somebody who has an animal cruelty conviction from running a puppy farm in New South Wales. That's got to be an oversight, surely.
So we do have disqualification orders that are available under the legislation. So it is an option for the court to disqualify people who have been convicted of offences from having care and control of animals in the future. In this case, the court did not apply those orders.
Right, so we could change the legislation though, couldn't we, to make it mandatory?
So that's true, it's not currently mandatory.
Yeah, so that, again, that's a failing of our laws. You can't blame everything on the, on the people doing the enforcement. They can only do what they can do under the laws. So why, I mean, that's, that's just one example of a really obvious reform that would take us some way towards, you know, the kind of regulations we're seeing in other states and what's expected by the community here. So your opening statement sort of implied that you didn't think that there was a need for a bill of the kind that's been proposed. Do you stand by that?
So the disqualifications are, the disqualification orders are available as an option or a tool to the enforcement agencies and the courts. It's true that they're not, it doesn't automatically apply upon conviction.
But it could, but we could, again, we could change the rules, we could change the laws so that it was mandatory to disqualify. Right, so that would be an obvious improvement we could make in New South Wales. Yes.
You do. Mr Searle?
Just to ask, I guess this is a question to Ms Black and to Ms Dench. Can you tell us, and happy for you to take this on notice, tell us how many full-time equivalent staff are engaged working in the animal welfare or companion animal space, if I can use that terminology? And what is the budget for those functions in each of DPI and OLG?
Sure, so we can probably answer part of the question and then maybe take the rest on notice only because within Kim's team, and Kim can talk about specifics of her team, but we do have other teams within DPI that provide support on all, like various different animal welfare matters. But in terms of Kim's team?
So in terms of my team, I have a team of 13, which is roughly about a $2 million budgetary spend for animal welfare. There's also people working in, back in your area, that are working on legislation and reform. So there's other, other staff in that area. And then there's the wider DPI, where you've got people in all other parts of DPI that are doing animal welfare work. So for example, in agriculture, in the agricultural area and other areas as well. So, so we have a dedicated technical team, a legislation team, and then there's the broader DPI where, you know, everybody, the expectation is everybody in that department should be promoting welfare.
And what does your team of 13 do?
My team of 13, mainly we're providing technical advice. So I've got a team that's almost half vets that provide technical information, do research in terms of literature reviews and understanding the facts and the evidence.
And who seeks and obtains your advice?
All sorts of people seeking and obtaining our advice.
Is it members of the public? Is it commercial breeders?
Actually, the minister.
Well, I'm not making any assumptions here, but, yeah.
All sorts of people. We do provide advice to other parts of the department, for example, in the exhibited animals area. So for example, if someone wanted to open a zoo or something, it's a bit off the topic today, but we do provide advice for that part of the department in terms of the licensing functions of the department. We provide advice to the legislation area, we provide advice to the agricultural area, we provide advice right across, and also out to the public, obviously, in terms of talking to stakeholders.
OLG?
Yeah, I'd like to take that on notice if I could get you the exact figures, but we have approximately about five staff in the OLG in regards to the pet helpline.
Okay, and what about the pet registry, like that function as well?
We do have one dedicated contractor who looks after the companion animals register. She was involved in actually setting up the thing 20 years ago, so...
She knows a bit about it?
She knows all about it, and we are very dependent on her to keep it running. So she is full-time on that, but as I say, she's an external contractor. And then we do use the money that we retain from the registrations to man the helplines, so the email and the phone lines. And we have between four and six people on that. At the moment, we do have a couple of extra contractors on because there has been an increase in the number of calls over the last six, 12 months. So, yeah, that's probably about it. And then we have a couple of regular full-time staff who do work associated with companion animals, but it's not their substantive role.
And just in relation to the Chair's question about the microchip, in terms of the updating of the information, so if I go and get a pet and it's chipped, obviously presumably my details end up on your register, is that correct?
They should, if you've put them in. But it's up to you to put them in.
And then what happens if my pet passes away? I tell my vet, is there any process by which all those details are updated so you don't get sort of a, an overloaded registry full of no-longer continuing pets?
Well, we...
How do I put it?
Yeah. Look, it is actually up to the owner or potentially the vet to go online and update those details. So it would be up to you to go and notify the registry that your pet is no longer with you.
Do we know that that work's being done, though? But it is, the registry could be a third of animals that are no longer continuing.
It is one of the characteristics of the registry that it is actually up to people to get on it and register their own pets.
Okay. Thank you. And those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr Hurst and then Mr Penestra.
Thank you, thank you all for coming today. I want to go back to Ms Black in regards to some of the questions about the case with Strawberry. We heard today that, that these particular breeders had been charged previously and found guilty for animal cruelty, continued to run a puppy farm with 400-something dogs. They've been charged again for animal cruelty, found guilty for 18 offences and are still running a puppy farm now with 105 breeding dogs plus puppies. We also heard that that wouldn't be allowed to happen in Victoria because someone who's convicted of animal cruelty is not allowed to run a companion animal breeding business under the Victorian law. Is that something that's been considered in New South Wales, enshrining some kind of fit and proper person test so that convicted animal abusers can't continue to breed animals in New South Wales?
So it's, it's not something that we've included in the reform bill that's before a different inquiry. But we are aware that that's, that's the case in Victoria. I suppose all I can say about that is kind of looking forward to receiving the committee's recommendations on that matter. I think one of the difficulties is that in the animal welfare space in particular, there are a really broad range of stakeholder views. There is no consensus around what action the government should take. So we did put out a paper last year with a proposal to introduce a licence for puppy breeders. And the feedback that we got from that was very mixed. So no clear consensus from the community or from stakeholders about whether we should introduce a licence or not, who the licence should apply to, or sort of how it would work. And so that's, that is one of the challenges and why this committee process is really good in terms of kind of giving stakeholders and the community the chance to provide feedback on a range of different proposals because there are a lot of ideas out there. But, yeah, as I said, the kind of consultation outcomes that we've seen so far on the different proposals that we've put forward have generated very mixed feedback.
So when you say that there's no consensus and there's mixed feedback, what groups of people are saying that convicted animal abusers should be able to run a large-scale breeding business?
So that's not a proposal, that specific proposal that we've put out and sought feedback on. I suppose the point I was making though was just that when we do put proposals out, we do tend to get very mixed feedback, so yeah, it acknowledges that.
This particular proposal that we've heard at this, I don't think we've heard from any witnesses so far saying that convicted animal abusers should be able to continue to run breeding businesses. But you've never had feedback on that yourselves, is just what's happened in this inquiry?
It's not something that we've specifically considered or tested feedback on before.
Okay. Strawberry's case was uncovered as part of the work of the government-funded RSPCA task force. But they only received a one-off payment, as I understand it, of $400,000. And the caring of the animals seized from that puppy farm alone cost $150,000. Has the $400,000 now been exhausted? And will the DPI be contributing further funding in this space to the RSPCA to run that task force?
So I think it was in budget estimates the Minister committed to a review of funding to the enforcement agencies. So that's a piece of work that we have underway at the moment.
Sorry, sorry, I wasn't asking about the enforcement costs. I was talking about just the puppy farm task force.
So that'll be part of this review because the task force is a specific enforcement activity within the RSPCA. So it was the funding that we...
So if the enforcement costs, sorry, if the funding for the enforcement goes up, would, so, sorry, so I guess what we heard from the other inquiry from the RSPCA was that they don't have any funding to be able to do any proactive inspections. And the only reason that they've been able to do proactive inspections on this puppy farm is because a special grant was given to them to be able to do proactive inspections. At the moment, with the $425,000 they get just for enforcement, they don't have enough staff, they don't run 24/7, they can't respond to every call of animal cruelty. I assume that if that money goes up, and I mean, unless it goes up to over $20 million, that they won't be able to do any proactive inspections unless there's a specified grant for proactive inspections. Are you suggesting that proactive inspections is specifically being considered to be, to ensure that they have funding to be able to do proactive inspections going forward as well as covering all the other areas where they don't have funding for now?
Yeah, that's right. So the, the review of funding that we're looking at will include proactive, you know, looking at proactive inspections and looking at a whole range of different issues that have been raised, both through the previous, or the various inquiries in the parliament as well as the submissions and conversations that we're having with the enforcement agency. So that will definitely be in scope as part of the review.
Witnesses from breeding organisations and animal protection groups alike have raised serious concerns within the New South Wales Breeding Code. It seems clear that the very small changes made in 2021 did nothing to actually address those concerns. For example, a number of concerns were raised that the code allows animals to be confined for 23 hours and 40 minutes a day, and doesn't have any requirements for appropriate enrichment or sterilisation of dogs. Is the DPI looking to further update that code and to address some of those big issues?
So I might let Kim speak to any specifics on the breeding code. But our intention had been to introduce the reform bill and then move on to the regulations and then look at the standards of which the breeding code is one of them. The changes that we made last year were deliberately limited to the sort of key pain points and issues that we had heard from stakeholders because we did only have three months to make those changes. And one of the things that, you know, DPI and the government is committed to in the... the government is committed to in the animal welfare space is to doing thorough public and stakeholder consultations. So I suppose some of these things take a bit more time than what we had last year to kind of open up for, um, public and stakeholder feedback and then kind of consider that feedback and then make the changes and ensuring there's no unintended consequences. So yeah, we acknowledge that the changes last year were quite limited, that the timeframe really dictated that. Um, and it, it is on our list to sort of do a more thorough review in the future. Um, as I said, our, our plan had been to, to get the bill in and then get the regs done and then move our way through the codes and the standards, so.
Um, sorry, did you say Kim had, might have some more for that or, or you feel that that was, has been covered?
I think that's probably covered, but thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Sorry, and I should call you, Ms Palmer, sorry. Um, late last year, um, the DPI published its consultation paper proposing a licensing and regulation scheme for dog and cat breeders. Can you give us a bit of an update on where this process is up to? Um, and whether or not the feedback from this inquiry will, will be used as part of that process?
Yeah, so that's certainly the case. So we put out a discussion paper last year that closed, um, towards the end of December last year. And then, um, early this year, we published a consultation outcomes report and I think provided that to this committee and published it on the DPI website. So we've considered the feedback. As I said in one of my previous answers, it's, it's very mixed, um, and no consensus around how a licensing scheme should apply, um, or how it would work. So yeah, it's certainly our intention to take on board, um, the recommendations and sort of discussions through this hearing process, um, with regards to that like proposal for a licensing scheme.
Thank you. You want to look to the floor and come back to me? I've just got a couple of other questions.
Can I just, I've got a question around the, the consultation paper. Um, uh, the breeding code should apply to working dogs, as mentioned in that consultation paper. And as I understand, I understand the consultation outcomes report, I think, March this year, um, talks about, you know, quote, feedback from the working dogs stakeholder groups was that they do want, they do not want to be exempt from the oversight, but instead want a separate and standalone code for working dogs. In view of these, these respondents, this would ensure that they're, they are fit, they are fit for purpose, uh, rules in place to protect the welfare of working dogs, which consider the particular circumstances of working dogs. So where is it up to now? Uh, and will that, is, is it the plan to include some sort of a welfare standard, uh, for working dogs?
So the breeding code currently does apply to working dogs. So it applies to, um, anyone who's in the business of breeding for fee or reward. So that does capture breeders of working dogs. What the working dog stakeholders raised with us through that consultation process is that they would like a standalone, um, code, um, that just applies to working dogs. Um, I suppose similarly to the licensing scheme, um, just as we were publishing or finalising the consultation process, uh, paper on that, um, this committee was set up. So it's another one that's sort of, um, I suppose we're, we're looking for.
This will be, so this will feed into.
That's right. Yes.
Right, thank you.
Um, I also wanted to just, um, see if I could find out where the review is up to in regards to the RSPCA funding, if there's any updates with that.
So, um, we've, we've started scoping it. I don't know, Suzy, if you want to give a bit of a overview of where things are up to.
Yeah, so essentially at this stage, we've just been scoping out, uh, the scope of the review, um, to get some feedback ultimately from the minister on that. So they've got, um, because we have the animal welfare grant as well, the majority of which goes to the approved travel organisations. Um, we've been looking through what's been feedback out of the inquiries as well around issues raised around the funding, um, to look at what sort of things do we need to, to look at in that and the, um, governance arrangements around the approved travel organisations as well.
Um, and I think, Ms Robinson, while I've got you, I think you mentioned the identifying numbers that, that, that get put with animals, um, that are, that are being sold. They come with it with an identifying number. Um, can I just clarify, there's no, there's no inspection required to link those identifying numbers, is there? No, uh, so therefore they can't, nobody's verifying that they're actually complying with the code. It's just a linking number. Is that right?
So it requires that anyone advertising a dog or cat for sale or to give away is required to put the ID, an ID number into the advertisement when they're advertising the animal so that it can be traced back to the register. So they can use the microchip number and under the Companion Animals Act, it's mandatory to have a microchip number before you, um, the animal's twelve weeks of age or before you sell or give it away. So essentially the breeder as the first owner will be in the system to trace back through that microchip number. And to make it, um, easier for people, particularly if they're advertising, uh, like a litter of puppies, um, you can also, this registry, um, can generate a breeder identification number. So you can use that instead for a recognised, um, organisation number. So shelters that are advertising for sale can use that number. But I guess the microchip number is the, the core number and it is mandatory under the Companion Animals Act to have a microchip number.
And I guess what, what we're getting back from consumers is that, that identifying number is somewhat confusing because people have assumed that that's linked to some kind of inspection or, or, you know, minimum requirements and things like that. But just to clarify, it's not actually linked to any kind of inspection or any kind of, um, verification that that person is meeting a certain standard. It's just a tracking number.
That's right. It's a tracing number. And then by pulling out of the tracing system, the registry, you can look at, well, who are, who's breeding because they've got to be registered in there. And then anyone breeding for fee or reward is required to comply with the breeding code.
Thank you. Um, I've just got a few questions for local government, New South Wales. Um, I've actually got a document that I might table, um, from, um, sorry, for the office. I've got questions for the Office of Local Government.
Thank you.
Um, just to clarify.
Just to be very clear.
Sorry. And I have a letter from local government, New South Wales, which I might table if I can, um, pass that on. Um, so local government, New South Wales have provided, um, this letter, um, in which they indicate that they support, um, the proposed puppy farm legislation. Um, and I'm wondering if you've actually spoken or consulted with local government, New South Wales on their position on this legislation?
We have had some discussions beyond scenes with local government, New South Wales. Um, no formal, um, but we have had some consultation in regards to it. Yes, we are aware of their submission.
Okay. And, and, and have you sort of taken some of their views on board, um, in regards to, um, their position on what might need to be put forward?
Yes, we certainly will consider those.
Thank you. Um, we heard, um, evidence in the panel before from, from one of the local councils, um, who says they're really struggling with a large number of development applications. Um, and they feel somewhat hamstrung in their ability to actually stop some of these really large scale breeding facilities. Um, what do councils do in this situation? What options do they have?
That's actually a question that would be for the, um, Department of Planning. Um, we don't oversight the de, the development application processes.
Have you had complaints from councils directly to your office about some of the issues that they're experiencing or, or would you just send them on to the planning office?
We certainly take on board, uh, any complaints and help facilitate the resolution of those with the other agencies. So we would certainly help, um, councils in seeking some solutions through the Department of Planning.
And would you be working with the Department of Planning, um, if there was any movement to provide councils with greater powers to actually refuse some of these development applications? Or would that be entirely up to, pardon me, would that be entirely up to the planning office?
The, that's, uh, would be an issue for the Department of Planning.
Um, we've heard councils say, um, that they are at a serious risk of being taken to the Land and Environment Court, um, because, because puppy farming is legal. Um, is that something that your department looks at as well or provides them any support on, um, in regards to councils being concerned that they might end up in court if they were to reject one of these development applications? Or again, does that just go to the Office of Planning?
That would be part, that would be a question for the Department of Planning.
Um, I just have three more questions. This is quick. This is quick. I'm just going to go quickly back to the DPI. Um, just to clarify, there's currently no legislated limit on the number of dogs that anyone breeder can have. Is that correct?
That's right.
Um, and there's no, there's also no rules around staffing ratios. Um, so somebody could technically have set up with three hundred dogs and one staff member.
So, um, the breeding code is kind of set up around sort of outcomes based. So there's standards that, um, a breeder is required to meet, but as you say, we don't have any specific staffing ratios in there. It's more about, you need as many staff, um, as is necessary to meet the requirements under the code.
Is that sort of legislating sort of after the, the issue has occurred? So does that mean that then we're allowing somebody to technically set up that way? But then we've got, um, we're, we're either relying on an extremely under-resourced organisation like the RSPCA to find out, um, if there's cruelty happening. Um, and, and first of all, they have to receive that information and somehow they have to do the investigation, somehow they have to house a lot of these animals. Um, but that requires the cruelty to happen before anyone steps in. I'm just wondering, would it make more sense to have our laws to actually set up in a way so that it stops the cruelty from happening in the first place? And if that's something that's been considered by the DPI?
Um, so I suppose that was, I think what you're asking is perhaps along the lines of the licensing proposal, which would be sort of an upfront assessment of whether a licence should be issued or not. So that was one proposal that we did test.
Sorry, no, I just mean about, I'm, I'm still referring to the fact that there's no cap on the number of dogs, no cap on the number of litters, no staffing ratios. Um, so without any of those things in place, um, it allows cruelty to take place under the proviso that then, like, an under-resourced organisation then has to actually find out about that cruelty and investigate it. But the cruelty's already happened because we've allowed a facility to set up.
Um, so I suppose the breeding code is outcomes focused. So it's about the outcomes or the animals rather than putting numbers in place or staffing ratios or, um, number of dogs or number of litters. Um, so the reason that we've done it that way is it is really challenging to kind of set a limit, you know, determine which number to pick. And when you're talking about dogs, there's, you know, a significant number of different breeds. So what's appropriate for one breed unlikely to be appropriate for a different breed. So, um, that doesn't address the question on staffing ratios, but it does in terms of number of litters. Um, we do have requirements in the breeding code around or limitations on the frequency of litters. And so that's, that's the approach we've taken to have an outcomes-based kind of set of rules that can apply across different breeds.
Hmm. Given everyone that we've heard from, you know, even breeding organisations that have come, everybody has sort of said, we shouldn't be allowing these facilities with one hundred, two hundred, three hundred dogs, that there's no way anybody could care for them. Um, I mean, I understand that it's quite difficult and I understand that everybody's giving different feedback as to where that cap should be. Um, and we've heard that in this inquiry. But at the same time, without any cap, everyone can agree that these facilities with a hundred dogs is, is just going to be a poor welfare outcome automatically.
I don't think that's been evidenced at all. I mean, we just heard from, uh, the previous witness.
I'll reword the question. We've, we've heard from a significant number of witnesses that, that that's their position. Um, so with that in mind, do you think that there needs to be a review of some level of cap?
So I think that the key thing is that a large breeding facility doesn't necessarily mean poor welfare outcomes. And I think I just caught the end of the evidence from the council, um, witness that, that that's their view as well. So, I mean, our view would be.
I think they said it, it's an indicator of poor welfare, but not necessarily.
Uh, I'd say it's an indicator of potentially a higher risk. And so, um, all kind of modern compliance agencies do take a risk-based approach to their inspections and audits and, and, um, compliance activities. So those larger breeding facilities, I would imagine, are the ones that will get more attention from the RSPCA, the Animal Welfare League, um, because it, it does increase the risk, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there is poorer welfare outcomes there. So I suppose hypothetically, you could have a very large breeding establishment with sufficient staff and really fantastic modern facilities, um, that go well above and beyond the requirements in the breeding code. You could equally have a very small breeder that doesn't meet the requirement. So size is not necessarily, um, at all an indicator of what the welfare outcomes will be.
Good.
Yep, Mr Vanasse.
Excellent. Um, I might go to the Office of Local Government first and just a bit the pet registry details. I've had a stakeholder playing at home and they've told me that they can't actually update their details on the pet registry. It's up to the councils. So is, I know, Ms Bishop, you sort of said that users could do that, but is it a case that they submit the form to council and the council's the one that actually gives the update?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I did actually just get some background check on that. When you first register your animal, I think you do it through the council. Um, but what was set up was the online, uh, portal so that people can go in and update details once they're in there.
Okay.
Um, I'm happy to, I'd, I'd like to. I will take this on notice and clarify, um, because yeah, it's my understanding you can get on, on the portal and you can update details and, and things. Um, but whether you initially have to be put in originally through a registered council. I just checked that before.
And just whether there's any lock, if you can edit, whether there's any locked fields that you can't, that would be, that would be.
As per the microchip, uh, question earlier, yes. Yeah. So I'm very happy to take that on notice and provide much more detailed and specific information.
Thank you. Um, as part of Mr Hurst's, uh, bill, there's proposal to include a source number. Um, I'm just wondering with the pet register, how that would work. I know with IT systems, they get to a certain age and there's only so many little edits and back, you know, backroom changes that you can do before you have to scrap it and do a whole new system. Um, have you done any work in terms of if this bill was passed and that source number process was, had to be introduced into this register? Would you have to scrap the whole system and rebuild? Or is it something that you could build, build in?
Uh, we'd need to see whether it could be attached to the current register. But in any case, there is work going on to rebuild the registry from scratch. As we've mentioned before, it is an old system. It was set up, you know, twenty-something years ago. Um, it is coming to the end of its life. And so we currently are working on a prototype with funding from the Digital Restart Fund to develop a new registry, which would be able to adjust to all those additional things as well.
Is that work underway now?
Yes, correct.
And when is it expected to be completed?
Um, we're currently in the process of, um, developing those prototypes. Um, I can't give you an actual time at this point, uh, but we're really trying to work on that quickly and get that delivered as soon as we can.
Um, I might just, uh, go to DPI. There's been a bit of contention about how many of these pup, puppy farms or DAs have been approved. There was a, a private survey done of councils and I think from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, there was fifteen DAs for breeding facilities across the whole state. Um, uh, the local council that we had last session, they were going to go back and, uh, cross-check that. But I'm just questioning to DPI, how do you know when, uh, yes, a new breeder has come online, so to speak, in terms of establishing them? Like, do you get a notification from somewhere or like, how do you find, you know, a new breeder on the, on your list? And then which would then be fed into, assuming, the puppy task force?
So the, usually we don't get notified, so to speak. So through the pet registry, as we've indicated, people need to have their dogs on there and can have a breeder identification number. So if a new breeder was coming online, they would need to have any of their animals registered through the registry. Sometimes we'll be made aware of the development application through the local council, getting in touch with the department. Um, that can sometimes come through to us in the animal wealth area, but there's a broader arrangement too for the department for some development applications in, in regional areas as well that go through to our agricultural area as well.
So you have an agreement with Office of Local Government to view that pet register?
There's information sharing arrangements, yes. The, the department and the enforcement agents. So we don't enforce.
So RSPCA would have an information sharing.
Enforcement agencies have access to use that for the purposes of doctor enforcement.
Okay. Can I go to the, um, puppy task force figures that you listed in your submission? Um, I think you updated them in your, um, in sixty-six penalty.
That's right.
Finishment notices. And how many of them were for what I call real animal cruelty offences and how many of them were for paperwork errors?
Yeah. So, um, the more significant number is for documentation, record keeping, those types of things. Um, only three cases taken to court for prosecution. So they, they're the kind of serious animal cruelty type offences. Um, a number, and sorry, I do have the details here. There were a few around, um, sort of failure to provide evidence of. There were a few around, um, sort of failure to provide evidence of, I suppose, um, like microchipping and vaccination status and those types of things. So, um, the fact that someone doesn't have the records in itself is not, um, a welfare or cruelty issue. Um, and so that's why pins have been issued, um, because they are still an indicator that, you know, someone, if you don't have a record that it's been vaccinated, then it may not be vaccinated, but it may also be. So that's some of the challenges with, with these stats. Um, but broadly, um, out of the four hundred and sixty-eight inspections, only three cruelty offences actually taken to court.
Are you going to provide those figures to the committee secretary on notice, thanks?
Yes, and I think the RSPCA may have taken a question like that on notice. These are their, these are their figures.
I just can't remember whether it was this inquiry or the other one.
I don't know, I'm sort of, I'm only an apple mugger for this one.
Yeah, and, and is, I guess, is that where you draw your reference to the fact that it's not as big an issue as, um, it's being made out to be?
So I think we are concerned about the higher level of non-compliance with the code.
Yep.
Um, but, yeah, I suppose the point I was trying to make is it's not, the cases like strawberry are isolated. Those kinds of issues are not widespread, so they are serious. Um, but, yeah, the sort of, the higher rates of non-compliance do tend, according to the statistics from the task force, are around record-keeping and documentation rather than, you know, failure to provide food or vet care or that kind of thing that are a more serious welfare issue than not having your paperwork up to date.
Okay, I think so. And lastly, let's talk about cats. Um, you know, obviously there's been a heavy focus on, on puppy farms, but as part of the bill, there's, there's elements there to do with kittens. Um, but from what I can hear from the evidence and submissions we've received, it doesn't seem to be as much of an issue. Like, talking to the Cat Protection Society, uh, today and, and other people in that cat field, it doesn't seem like it's as prevalent as perhaps the dog breeding situation. Is that something that you're hearing as well?
Yes, I would say we get very little, if any, white letters into the department or to the minister in relation to, um, cats. It's, um, the odd case is more like a hoarding situation than a breeding situation, which is, tends to be mental health related as well in terms of cats, but there's not a lot of that either.
And perhaps to the Office of Local Government, are you, isn't all the crazy cat hoarders? It's crazy to use that term, but, you know, the-
My mother finds that offensive, no.
The cat, the cat hoarding, is that what you're more here of? Or is it more stray cats with Office of Local Government? Like, what are you hearing of, uh, cat breeding, mass cat breeding facilities?
Not mass cat breeding facilities, no, mainly straight, straight cats is what we get most of our complaints in relation to.
Um, I'll throw it back to the chair or the-
Well, I've got one and then I'm there and then I'm going to, because I want to finish up with the government. So can I, uh, in the government submission, it's probably a chance to update since you presented the submission. But, um, in response to terms of reference, the recommendations of the two thousand and fifteen Joint Select Video Companion Animal Breeding Practices in New South Wales, it stated there were, of the twenty-seven recommendations that were supported or supported in part, twenty recommendations have been completed and seven recommendations are partially completed underway or pending. Um, so I, I guess, is it, can I ask for an update on those seven recommendations? Um, and just where they are at considering there's a wall since the submission, amen?
So I think in terms of the DPI ones, because some of those are Office of Local Government related, um, there was some aspects around consideration by the Animal Welfare Advisory Council. Um, the council had considered and reviewed them and given advice. But as previously mentioned by Tara, um, in terms of looking at what we do with the breeding code and updating the breeding code, um, we'd be looking at progressing that through, through that process. As we've said, we're looking through the reform of the Act and the regulation first and then picking up through the standards.
Thank you. And I will do.
Yes, in regards, um, to, to those recommendations, the majority of them have been completed or nearly-
Nearly.
-finalised, yeah. I have a list.
Could you, maybe if you could take a notice and just provide it to the-
I can provide the list with an update of where each of those recommendations are up to.
Thank you. Um, last question from Ms. Hurst before I go to the government for their chances to wrap up.
Perfect. Thank you. I just, I just had another follow-up question from Ms. Black in regards to the, um, question around the paperwork, um, and people being charged for not having paperwork. When we heard from the RSPCA, um, which I'm, I'm sure you've heard their evidence as well, they said that, well, the evidence that they gave the committee was that sometimes that would be paperwork, not showing any evidence of, of veterinary care for sick animals, for example. Um, and so they said that a lot of that missing paperwork was actually, you know, when you say missing paperwork, it sounds like it's not important, but that evidence they gave is that a lot of it was actually very serious welfare indicators because it would indicate that somebody maybe never got veterinary care when they said that they did. There was no evidence of that. Um, I'm just wondering where this discrepancy is when you're just sort of saying that no paperwork is not so serious, but the RSPCA is saying, actually, yes, that's the box we ticked, but it's actually very serious indicators of welfare issues.
Yeah, so, um, it's probably just to loop back to Mr. Van Assia's question as well. I've got the breakdown in front of me now. This is, um, so there were nineteen penalties, penalty infringement notices issued in the six months to, I think it's the six months till now, um, the recent six-month reporting period anyway. Um, so, um, failing to have a documented evacuation plan is an example. Um, failing to provide an information package at purchase, failing to provide written guarantees, I believe that's to purchases as well, um.
And are these, are these like the majority or are these just random examples?
The, I've got a table here in front of me and it's, it's pretty spread across. There's a range of different, um-
Are you able to provide that table?
Um, I think we might have to check, these are the RSPCA's information, but we can certainly check with them and-
You take it on notice?
Yeah.
Ms. Hurst, can you recap that anyway? Take it on notice.
Yep. So as I said, um, as I said, um, failure to have some of the records, like the example that you gave around, you know, someone doesn't have the documentation that they've, um, had their, um, animal vaccinated as an example, um, on the surface can look like, oh, we just don't have the paperwork. I, I think, as I said, it could indicate that actually you didn't get your animal vaccinated and that is a more serious issue. So, yes, I acknowledge, um, I suppose the point that you're making. Um, I guess I was trying to, um, explain, you know, these aren't serious cruelty offences. They are about records and documentation and that, those records and documentation are important. That's why we've got them in the breeding code in the, in the first place. So not trying to downplay that, that wasn't an offence. It's entirely appropriate that a penalty infringement notice was issued. Um, but it's not examples like the strawberry case that we've been talking about.
Thank you.
Now, to wrap this up, we'll go to the government, the lead, the government member of the committee, Mr. Fane.
Oh, just one of the government members, Chair, I don't think I should call myself the lead, but thank you very much for hearing today. Yeah, Lou's here, we're good, you know, Lou and I, we're a team.
Check on the last one.
I'm going to start with, uh, Local Government, New South Wales, if that's all right. And, um, actually, it comes from a question that, um, Ms. Hurst asked you. And she spoke about, um, uh, the Local Government, New South Wales submission and saying that they were supportive of the legislation. Is that, um, if I've got that correct, Ms. Hurst? Because I've just gone through the, um, the submission myself, it's submission twenty-one. And I'll note two things. Um, it says that it's a draft submission, that it hasn't actually been through the, um, through the board yet and that, um, you know, it's waiting approval. But the other thing is it doesn't actually indicate that it's supportive of the legislation. It just indicates that they're, they've got concerns about some of the-
I think you're talking about something else, sorry.
It was a letter, too.
Is there, okay, yeah, no, that'd be great. Sorry, because I'm just looking at the submission and that's-
Sorry, this was just a letter from Mel T.
What's the date on that? Twenty twenty-one. Um, that's the Companion Animal Builder, that's, um, that's different though to what their submission is, which is dated, um, March twenty-two.
I wasn't referring, sorry, just to clarify, I wasn't referring to their submission. That's why I tabled this document.
Okay, so now, now, noting now that we've got the letter that's dated, uh, twenty twenty-one that says they're supportive, however, the submission from, um, Local Government, New South Wales, um, doesn't indicate support, it indicates that there's a number of, um, issues that they've got. Um, have you had the opportunity to engage with them and, I guess, um, look to see what some of their concerns are and perhaps other ways with which, um, they could be addressed? Not through a legislative, perhaps, um, a blunt instrument like a bill, but maybe more through education and engagement with breeders?
Yes, we're, the Office of Local Government is regularly in contact with Local Government, New South Wales. We have regular meetings and discussions and certainly it's on our agenda to discuss. Yes, there's definitely a variety of questions that are raised, not necessarily just through legislation, but also through guidance and, um, um, and, and looking at working with councils on, on how we might be able to improve systems and, and arrangements on the ground. But, yeah, we have regular contact with Local Government, New South Wales.
So, um, I, I guess I've spoken to you about, um, a number of the issues. And, uh, in, in the Office of Local Government, um, is the, the view that educating and, um, uh, advising people about how to do things better is, is a better way to actually, um, achieve an outcome? Perhaps than, um, as I said, a more blunt instrument?
Certainly early intervention, awareness raising and education, um, is, 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 at, at the front end is a lot better than at the back end, which, when you, you use a blunt tool, uh, in which to, um, it's of course a lot more, uh, early intervention has proven itself to be a lot more cost benefit.
And we heard, um, testimony earlier today, um, from, uh, from experiences in other states, i.e. Victoria, where they've got, uh, I guess, a similar legislative instrument as to the bill that we're looking at now, um, although it is not as draconian. Um, it, it didn't go as far as what's being proposed here, but it's had, um, a, a, an outcome that's been achieved. Do you, do you have, um, uh, submissions or, um, have representations from, um, groups like, um, Local Government, New South Wales about, um, their support or otherwise for, um, the New South Wales, uh, proposed bill or the Victorian legislation? Have they come to you and said, we need this?
I'd need to take that on notice so that we've got formal, um, requests in that regard.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I raise that because I'm, you know, obviously we've got this letter here which says, you know, they support it. But then five months later, their submission, um, is clearly, um, different to that. And there's obviously a submission which is the newer of the two documents. I'll just come to DPI, um, quickly and, um, just, uh, noting some of the, um, even the commentary and questions that you've just been asked around, um, uh, the, the issues around breeding, you know, uh, leave puppy farms aside, but just, you know, with breeders who are trying to do the right thing and have a, uh, a love for their, um, their animal and their hobby and the like. Um, is it, is the DPI's position that, um, where there's genuine mistakes or where there's, um, issues with documentation, as we've just discussed, that it's actually better to try and, um, uh, provide detail, provide education, provide advice and an opportunity to reform than it is to be, um, more, uh, systematic and, um, uh, try and go for a firmer enforcement measure?
Yeah, so I think similar to the, um, evidence from Office of Local Government, um, education and awareness is far and away the most effective tool to improve compliance. So, um, as I said in the opening statement, that's something that we want to look at and do a bit more work on this year because we do believe that, um, that's, that's the way to change people's behaviour in a, in a much more effective way than, um, yeah, some sort of tougher compliance and enforcement. And so that's not to say that, um, enforcement and, you know, strong penalties aren't part of, of the tools that need to be available. Um, but certainly for the vast majority of breeders who want to do the right thing, um, I think there is a role for the government to play in, in making sure that they do understand what the requirements are. Um, some of the changes that we made to the breeding code last year were around clarifying, um, some of the requirements that people just didn't understand and making them simpler to understand. So we are on a, I suppose, an ongoing path to make things easy for people to understand and educate them about what good welfare looks like and what their legislative obligations are. Because I would say that generally people are in the business of breeding cats and dogs because they love them. Um, and so they are, you know, seeking to do the right thing. Um, we do have a role to play in making sure that they understand what those requirements are.
So do you think it would be fair to say that in the, uh, in the instance where, um, we've got a bill in front of us that we're, um, doing this inquiry into? Um, is that something, or let me rephrase. Do you think at the moment, in your opinion and what you're seeing on the ground, are we achieving, uh, the outcomes that perhaps a bill like we are looking at is seeking to achieve at the moment? Um, and perhaps noting that there may be things that could be done better, um, that that could be done through other means, not through, through a legislative, um, uh, change?
Can I just say to that, I think we've got the gist of Mr. Fane's question, but just be clear. Can I ask public servants for opinion? So in that context, you should answer that question, but not seeking your opinion.
I wasn't, yeah, I was, I was seeking, I was seeking their, their view on their experience, Chair.
Um, so I think, uh, in terms of the, the private members' bill that is before the parliament, um, it does propose a range of new measures, um, that I think some of them are similar to the Victorian experience. And what we've heard from stakeholders out of Victorian experience is that there have been some unintended consequences from the laws that were passed down there. So that's something that we would want to avoid here. Um, one of the, um, I suppose opportunities from this committee process as well is to get feedback on the private members' bill because I don't think that there's been a sort of, until this committee process, sort of that broad public and stakeholder consultation, um, that we would be looking for before, I suppose, formalising a position on the private members' bill itself. Um, in terms of setting, you know, I think I've answered an earlier question around setting caps on, um, the number of, um, animals or, um, the number of litters. Um, our approach to date has been to try and be more outcomes-focused rather than coming up with a number and setting caps and limits. Um, and as I said, we do have, um, requirements or limitations around the frequency of litters, which I suppose when you've got a range of different breeds and different differences between even individual dogs within the same breed, um, some of those more outcomes-focused, um, rate requirements, um, mean that they can apply more broadly and, um, uh, easier to enforce because you can look at the welfare for, for the animals instead of, um, having very specific and very long lists of sort of different requirements depending on the breed. Um, it can get quite complex. And, um, I suppose as we were just talking about, one of our challenges is to get people to understand and make things easy for people to follow the requirements. So that's, that's the challenge, I suppose, um, between, um, taking an outcomes-based approach or, or setting caps. Obviously, caps and numbers are very clear and easy for people to know what the number is, but there are, there are challenges, um, with taking that approach as well.
My final question is, is do you think it's fair to say that, um, DPI and, um, the Office of Local Government are continuing their work to ensure that, um, animal welfare through breeders is, um, of a high standard? And, um, that perhaps that work should be the focus, um, into the future as opposed to a legislative change like this?
Um, so, yes, we're definitely always looking at ways that we can improve outcomes and, um, very happy to consider new ideas and proposals that come, um, out of other states or from stakeholders about how we could do things better. It is, I suppose, an evolving piece and community expectations are changing and science is changing. So it is a continuous process. And, um, I suppose, as I said, this is one of the reasons why the committee process is really useful because it does give the opportunity for some of those ideas and proposals to be ventilated and tested with stakeholders. So we're definitely very happy to kind of take on board the, the input and recommendations that the committee comes up with.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, we, we would certainly, um, agree with the testimony that's just been heard from DPI, from Ms. Black. Definitely, uh, it's always about continuous improvement and about ensuring good welfare for our animals.
Thank you. Thank you very much.